Beeping. Is that just in my head?
That's just your head.
Good.
Okay. Good evening. At 6:00 PM, August 22nd, 2018, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this being -- meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. So, next if we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Bill Blais, Dela Zapsen tonight, so sitting on our first hearing tonight will be our three regular board members. Ron is going to step down on this, so we will have Brad and Sharon. So Sharon, would you read the first continued hearing?
540 Great Neck Road South. Petition, William Haney requests an administrative appeal to the building commissioners concerning a cease and desist of a heliport under Article 174-17, 174-22, and 174-25 of the zoning bylaws on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 99, parcel 40-0, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Mary E. Zaki. Continued from July 25th, 2018, hearing on the request of the board.
Hi. Good evening, members of the board. Brian Wall, for the record, my client William Haney is here with me tonight. This is continued twice for the opinion of town council. You might recall, the arguments in this case are that the use in question was grandfathered. Alternatively, the use was immune, and then no longer immune, and our argument is under applicable decision of law, such a use becomes pre-existing nonconforming. And the third is that the change in the law cannot be retroactively applied. We were continued so that you could seek the opinion of town council. After the continued hearing, at your request, I wrote an email to the building commissioner. I included all the case law materials that I wanted to go live on, and I tried to make it easy so that Mike could just forward it to the county attorney. I did ask for the opinion from the administrator, but I think it wasn't available. When I asked Mike right before the hearing tonight, he tells me that he forwarded it to the board. I don't know what's in it.
Okay. I can go over it. Save you a lot of time.
Sure.
It's four pages. Naturally, it's client privilege, so I can't really tell you everything that's in it, but I'll read you the bottom line. "Based on the above, I suggest that the subject cease and desist order can be defended upon compelling legal grounds. But I would suggest that Mr. Haney apply for a special permit, special use permit, to authorize his discontinued use." So what he wants you to do is withdraw and ask for a special permit.
So I think what I'd like to do at this particular time is request the board's indulgence for a further continuance so that we can process this and then make an informed decision as to what to do.
I have no problem with that.
Does that okay with the board?
Do you agree?
Need to vote on this, I assume. Okay. Do somebody like to make a motion to continue this till when?
I don't have a motion for September 12th. I don't have a motion page for this, so. All right, so I'll make a motion.
Let's get a date before we do anything. September 12th. Does that work?
No, I have to be forwarded to the board at that night. Do I have the next availability?
Twenty-six.
That will be fine.
Okay. So we'll continue till?
Continue. Just continue.
Till September 26th.
I'll make a motion that we grant the continuance till September 26th for 540 Great Neck Road South. Petition of William R. Haney's request of an administrative appeal to the building commissioners concerning a cease and desist of a heliport under Article 174-17, 174-22, 174-25 of the zoning bylaws on property located in R3 zoning district, map 99, parcel 40-0, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Mary E. Zaki.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you for the indulgence, and I'll see you in a moment.
I'm sorry we had to have everybody attend, but, you know, there's no way I can release this information prior because of public meeting laws. Nothing to sign? Okay. Okay, we're gonna get -- we're gonna do five Secant Island. Yeah, so why don't we give Kevin the mic? All right, Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
Okay. 5 Secant Island Road. Owner Patricia A. Conley requests a variance under Article 174-31 and 174-33, setbacks from water in wetlands, of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 13, Mashpee, Mass.
Lot of paper here, Kevin.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Crane and I have the pleasure of representing Patricia Conley in connection with her application for relief under Section 174, Section 33. First off, allow me to apologize to the board for my appearance. For obvious reasons, trying to tie a tie on one foot isn't the easiest thing to do, and getting a pair of pants over this ankle was an impossibility. So please don't view it as any reflection on my lack of respect for the board. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to remain seated during the presentation as well. This is a fairly simple, straightforward request. The premises, if you've had an opportunity to review it, is a good-sized 46,600-plus square foot lot out on Secant Island Road. The lot itself has over 400 feet of frontage on that road, and as you can see from the lot, it is a relatively oddly shaped lot, somewhat triangular in shape, and it is bounded, really, in part on two sides by water. The applicant is proposing to construct a 20-by-22 single-car garage. There's an office and a game room and a half-bath above, per the plans that we have submitted for relief. Mr. Cook, who designed the building, has provided me with a revised plan. There has been a revision to the windows in the building, and we do have the revised window plan for consideration by the board. The basis for locating the garage on the side of the building that you see and for not attaching it to the building, as you will see in the photographs, there are some improvements to the building on that side, as well as access to the basement. And if you will note on the plan, this lot is significantly impacted by a velocity zone. We have located that garage about, and the only place on the lot that is not within a velocity zone, because if we put it in the velocity zone, we would have to raise it above the velocity zone elevation and have a ramp going into the building. So we have located where we believe is the only location on the lot that makes sense. No matter where else we put it, we would have needed relief from the wetland requirement, as you see on one side, and the wetland we seek relief from is an easement that the town of Mashpee has taken, which actually crosses the property. And you have some photographs there that show you riprap walls with an easement where the water from the bay runs further inland through that particular easement. The property is situated in an R3 zoning district. As you know, that district requires a 40-foot front yard setback 15 on either side. The lot coverage of maximum of 20 percent on a lot this size, really, given the size of the structure and the size of the proposed garage, really is not an issue. As far as the front yard setback is concerned, the lot is bounded on one side by vacant land and on the other side by a dwelling that sits about 2.7 feet from the front lot line. So in taking the average between the 40 feet, which is assumed for vacant land on one side and the 2.7 on the other side, the 25 feet that we are proposing is well within the average of the two, which would be 21 feet. As you're also aware, the board, the town, has adopted a bylaw that calls for a 50-foot setback from water or wetlands. As I said, the easement that the town has taken going through the lot constitutes a wetland as the ocean runs through the lot at that point. The applicant is proposing to locate this garage some 33 feet from that easement area, and as such, we have requested variance relief. It is suggested that we meet the criteria for the grant of variance because of the impact of the velocity zones, which is a topographical feature, the wetlands which abut the lot, and we believe that the grant of the relief that we request would not adversely impact public good and nullify the intent of the bylaw as it exists. I believe, and I haven't heard anything written into the record, but it's my understanding that the conservation commission has approved this project, so it has undergone the scrutiny of the conservation commission, which, as you know, is the board primarily responsible for dealing with projects in or adjacent to wetland resource areas. And as I said, I believe an order of conditions has issued so that there is an assumption that the conservation commission concluded that the relief could be granted without adverse impacts to the wetland resource areas. If the board has any questions, I'm more than happy to respond if possible.
So this is not attached, correct?
It is not attached. You've got a bulkhead on that side, you've got an outside shower on that side, you've got air conditioning equipment on that side, as shown in the photographs, and you would have to do some significant architectural changes to the building in order to accommodate an attachment, and would still have to seek relief from the bylaw because we would still be within the 50 feet.
I have no problem with the garage. The problem I have is the bath up there in the detached garage. Board of Health comments, "Design plan for the proposed septic system has not been approved by the Board of Health. The room over the garage constitutes the fourth bedroom."
Is a follow-up.
But the proposed septic system accommodates a four-bedroom capacity. The septic permit must be issued to a licensed installer prior to building permit sign-off.
There's a revision to the comment.
Go ahead.
I don't know which came first.
I got one. Hi, Mary Ann. This is from Glen Harrington today. "I would like to revise my comments for 5 Secant Island Road. The septic design plan has been submitted formally to the Board of Health. The plan will not need to go to the board for approval as there are no variances. The plan is still under staff review. The increase in flow to the four bedrooms is acceptable for design purposes. Thanks, Glen."
Okay. I have conservation. Project's been approved by conservation. Okay, let's see. Okay, here's the revised. I just got, yeah. DPW. If the approve, if the above request is approved, I would recommend a condition then imposed requiring that the applicant provide a turnaround on the property to avoid vehicles backing out onto Secant Island.
I've got it. Inspections. 5 Secant Island Road. The area is zoned R3 and is in a pre-contact archaeology. Sensitivity area list is high. The applicant is seeking a relief to Article 174-33, setbacks from water and wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a detached garage. The proposed garage will be constructed within the AE elevation 13 flood zone, which would require it to be constructed in accordance with the building in the flood zone.
So what's the bottom line on that? It's gotta be lifted?
No.
No, it's just the way it's, because it's an AE. No, it's V. We have another conversation. But AE is part of the flood zone, so you're talking about some type of vent system, like a smart vent to allow the water to wash in, wash out.
No mechanicals. Nothing mechanical can be on the, which I noticed, I don't know how you, how they're gonna view that, I noticed on the pictures, the AC condensers are on the ground.
Say it again, please?
The AC condensers to the existing home are on the ground.
I'm dealing with new construction because, don't forget, what Mashpee had their flood maps changed about, what, last five years, six years? So maybe at that time, the flood elevation wasn't as far up because there's a lot of places, whether it's Mashpee, Falmouth, Dartmouth, wherever, they weren't in the flood zone. Then when FEMA redid all the maps, people were getting hit with now that they're in the flood zone when they weren't before.
But the new structure, if they're gonna put air conditioning upstairs, that's gonna have a compressor. That compressor is gonna have to be out.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
Do you think that the new structure is gonna be 50% or more of the value of the structure that's already existed?
No, because it's freestanding. It's not connected to the house. If it's connected to the house, then you do the 50% rule.
So it wouldn't matter, so it's not 50% of the lot, it's 50% of the structure?
Correct. But in this case, it's a freestanding structure, so it's 100%.
It's a crazy rule.
I don't write them. I reset them.
I know, I know. It's just, it is just such a messed up rule.
Isn't that, that's a state.
That's federal. That's federal. That's not.
No, no, it's, I know, hey, it's all good. It's just, it's a ridiculous rule.
I don't have any problem with the, I just have a problem with the bath up there.
Well, it's a half-bath. It's not a full.
Yeah, there's no shower.
No shower.
We went through this two weeks ago.
I know, and we approved it, and you.
And I voted against it.
As one board member, I have no problem.
In that case, the bathroom was on the first floor.
It was, but there was no shower.
Brad, you're wrong. Sharon's in on this one, so it's Sharon.
If there was a shower, it'd be another conversation. I don't know, I don't know if they'd put that, I don't know if you could put the bathroom on the first floor. Well, I guess you couldn't in the flood zone, but.
It all depends what the elevation is.
The last one was on the first floor. This one's proposed for the second floor.
If I may ask. Are you concerned about the bathroom, which makes it more, which becomes another apartment?
Correct.
Okay. It would seem to me that Board of Health is saying, calling it a bedroom, the other room. So under their rules and regulations, it would also depict it to be another unit. I mean, I.
There's no, we could, to condition it, no kitchen facilities?
No cooking.
No cooking facilities.
No shower. No tub. I just don't know how you.
I don't, I'd have an issue with conditioning. Well, the shower's a whole nother thing, but I would say you have to condition it for no cooking, so it can't be a second apartment.
Why don't you just condition and say it can't be a second apartment for whatever reason they do?
Whatever qualifies it as an apartment. What qualifies it as a.
It cannot be used for sleeping quarters.
What are your thoughts?
No, I agree that we can put, well, no, we, you guys can put conditions on it. Yeah, it can't be used for sleeping, but I also think making sure there's no cooking facilities, because I was just involved earlier this month in court with the Board of Health on an attached garage that was supposed to be just something, that it turned into something more than that. So that's to the extent, you know, we ended up going to court on these things. But the board can. I say sleeping, cooking, showering facilities, you know, those three things. So it cannot be used as an additional unit or apartment. Cannot have sleeping quarters, can't have cooking facility, and can't have a shower. And this may help them, because my understanding, in council, you can, you know, I'm ringing between the lines with the Board of Health is saying that they're still reviewing the plan.
Right, and I'm not.
But they're almost calling it a fourth bedroom.
I'm not sure it qualifies as a bedroom, quite frankly.
But it's not our call. It's on the Board of Health.
It's probably because of the opening.
That's a wide open, that's a wide open space. I don't believe it qualifies. I don't believe under the, under the building code it qualifies as a.
But I think they require a six-foot to unfinished space or a space that would make it not private. So all you're doing is making that whole upstairs as a one-bed, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I don't think it qualifies as a bedroom.
But if you're, if the applicant, your client, is not looking to make it an apartment, we can issue appropriately.
No, we're not, we're not looking to make it an apartment, no. I'll let Mr. Cook, who designed it, maybe a couple of comments.
I know that you can put a shower in after the fact.
No question. You can close that six-foot.
You can put a barn door right there, too.
You can close that right down.
We can't control what they do after. We can tell them what they can and can't do. We can't control if someone wants to do something illegally.
Yeah, and I'm not so sure we live under that pretense.
If I, if I may, Steve Cook from Ktuhua Bay.
One sec. Jim?
Any thoughts?
I have no thoughts at the moment. I'm just sort of absorbing what everyone's saying.
Just 'cause he gets a sit doesn't mean everybody can.
Yeah, really.
All right. Steve Cook from Ktuhua Bay, design project designer. Yeah, no, this is not designed to be a bedroom. The hot bath is in there for convenience instead of running down, running back at the house. But the other thing, too, the building code says you can't have a bedroom attached to a garage, and the only access through upstairs is through the garage and the door on the outside. So if you, if you say that this is a bedroom on the second floor, you go down the stairs and there's doors right into the garage, so that doesn't meet any building code requirements. So it's not a garage.
I think with this board.
I mean, it's not a bedroom.
Speaking for myself, what happens is we look at the person that may buy this house someday, and they're told by the brokers, hey, you can put, you know, we've all been there, right? You can put another bedroom.
We all know what happens.
Right? We're trying to stay away from that, that's all.
Yeah, we can't control what's gonna happen in the future.
We can't live our lives based on what may happen.
Right, so.
Like I was stating earlier, not to interrupt you, I apologize, but if the Board of Health is still reviewing these plans because they haven't made up their mind, you know, and I'm not directing the board to go a particular way, but if they say you can't have this, 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 then that may go a long way to the Board of Health and whatever they're still looking at. Because with no disrespect to the Board of Health, I've never seen a reply back from the Board of Health saying, we're still reviewing the plans. Usually they review it, they give us the comments, and that's it. So to me, the revised comments say the plan is still under staff review. What do you mean? I've never seen that before. They usually review it, give their comments, move on.
I'm a little confused, because the last line on his revised comments is, "The increase in flow to the four bedrooms is acceptable for design purposes." So has a new septic plan been designed, or?
Oh, yeah. There's a whole new septic system. It's not that good submitted.
It sounds like it's, they're approving it to for an enlarged septic system.
Right, and so there's, I think they're saying that it is a bedroom, and the new septic system will handle that. So if we say as a board, though, here's where the, here's where the quandary could be for them. If we say as a board that we're not allowing it to be a bedroom, they go back to Board of Health, and Board of Health sees our approval that says no bedroom, they could get caught in the middle where. No, I don't think so. I think what'll happen is the Board of Health will know that if the existing home already has three bedrooms, then they know if the applicant ever wants to put an addition on to create a fourth bedroom on the existing house, they know they got that. But what I'm saying is if the Board of Health considers this a bedroom for whatever reason, and our approval says we can't have a bedroom, then they could get into a middle where the Board of Health says, hey, you gotta redesign that second floor because it is, in our opinion, a bedroom. And VA will allow a bedroom. Yeah, but I don't know how much more we, you know, we can do because they get the six-foot opening.
And the clear railing, too.
It's clearly.
My experience with the Board of Health, and I have quite a bit of it, they're not gonna call this a bedroom, unless for some reason.
But they are now.
No, they're not.
Yeah, they are.
They're not, where's it saying that we're thinking this is a bedroom? They're just, they're just saying they, they got a new septic design that is designed for a lot. It doesn't say anything that we're, they're still reviewing it.
Typically, the Board of Appeals doesn't get into designing interior space in buildings, at least based upon my years of experience. If you were talking, creating a second dwelling unit on this property, then I can understand it because then you're violating, violating the zoning bylaw by creating a second one.
The increase in flow to the four bedrooms.
Okay. Is acceptable for design purposes.
They're calling that a bedroom. No, they're saying the design purposes are the septic.
Then I think they're saying the design of the new septic system is designed to handle four bedrooms. I don't think they're calling this a bedroom. My experience with them is they're not gonna call that a bedroom the way it's drawn.
And I mean, I, you know, typically, does the Board of Appeals impose a condition that, that somebody can't put a bed in a basement?
They actually, they actually, and I had to go to a meeting and discuss it with them in length, where a closed-end porch was considered a bedroom.
Because it had a door going to it.
It had a slider going to it.
Didn't have a six-foot opening.
So it had a slider.
That's not a six-foot opening.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I argue, who the heck's gonna put a bedroom out?
It's not a six-foot opening. I just know, my, and I have a lot of experience with them, where they just say, I wanna see a six-foot opening, I wanna see an open set of stairs, and that's what that has.
I mean, we're only looking for a garage. I mean, people can have, people can have offices above a garage. People can have studios above a garage, you know, people can have workspace above a garage and utilize a half-bath in conjunction with those workspaces. I mean, it happens all the time.
You take it out, I'll approve it. I'll vote for it, if you take the bath out. No problem.
Well, my client isn't here, so I can't make that representation.
Anybody in the audience?
Well, we haven't got that done yet. Any more comments before we go to the audience?
No, I'm just, other than I don't have an issue with the way it's drawn, and I would condition it upon whenever we have to condition it, so it can't be a bedroom.
Okay. Sharon, last comments, anything? Jim?
No.
Ron?
Subject to several conditions I'm not too concerned about.
Okay. Anybody in the audience? Questions, comments, anything? Seeing none. Ron, would you like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to ask the applicant's counsel, if I may, what the variance specifically is that he's seeking.
He was seeking a 17-foot variance from the 50-foot requirement, because the location of the garage is 33 feet off the wetland easement that the town of Mashpee took.
So that's third, so what you're saying is it's 50 feet required, you're supplying 33, and that's a 17-foot variance?
That's correct.
From, from wetlands. And that is the only relief you're seeking?
That is correct.
Okay, I would like to make a motion by my.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance to Patricia Conley of 5 Secant Island Road under Section 174-31-31 and 174-33, setback from wetlands, water in wetlands, of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached garage of property located in R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 13, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing the variance, the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of variance under Mash General Laws, Section 10. The amount of the variance is 17 feet from, and the request of the variance is setback from wetlands. The required number of feet is 50 feet. It is clearly depicted on the plan, there is 33 feet, thus a variance is sought in the amount of 17 feet from the wetlands or water body. I also make reference to proposed site plan, project proposed addition and septic upgrade, 5 Secant Island Road, Mashpee, Mass., sheet number 1 of 1, date September 27, 2017, revision number 112117, revised proposed mitigation planning is by MC, approved, MC revised 2222718, add detail of a butter front yard setback by JB, approved, MC drawing file number Secant Island 5, parcel SS, drawn by MC, checked by G.
file number Secant Island five Foster SS, drawn by MC, checked by JB, prepared by Cape Town Island engineer, owner of record, Patricia Conley, twenty-nine Benton Road, Belmont, Mass. Also set of plans, garage plans, new garage for Foster residence, Five Secant Island Road, Mashpee, Mass, Kettuah Island, Kettuah Bay Design LLC, scale one quarter inch equals one foot, date five twenty-eight two eighteen, twenty eighteen, drawing number A one, first floor plan, second floor plan A two, front elevation, rear, rear elevation, left elevation, right elevation, A three first floor plan, A four front elevation, rear elevation. It's also conditioned upon all the town comments, specifically the Board of Health comment. Also conditioned upon, there's no allowance or no approval from this board, nor will there ever be, or nor is there, an approval for an apartment, nor can there be in this structure any facility for cooking, for showering, or for sleeping. Specifically prohibited is an abuse of an apartment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
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 No. Okay.
You want me to hand?
Is that mine? There we go.
Is that like, oh!
They stamped? Twenty-second, is it?
I don't know, I think these are no longer, these here are no longer valid, correct? I think we do need them.
The window, I think the floor frame is fine, but it...
Is that all right? The one you just stamped? Says revised. So, it's gotta be.
No, no, Scott gave me these.
I just had somebody send some.
You want some of these back? All right. All right, this is the site plan, right?
There you go. Sign it out. There you go.
There you go. You need any of this?
Oh, yeah, sign them all. Time to see a voice.
Hang on.
Anyway. You wanna do two of these, don't you?
I've been looking for another one of those.
We have another one of these?
Yeah, I got one over there.
All right. Thank you.
All right. You're busy. That's good. All right, Sharon, you're out on this one, and Brad's in on this one.
Let's let you know it is there.
Just a second. Forty-five and Hoiden? No, that's my stuff.
Oh, okay, just wanna make sure.
Yeah, that's just...
Clearing the playing field.
Okay, we all set? Okay, Sharon, if you would read the next new hearing?
Forty-five Nehoyden Road, owner Richard H. Gorbady requests a written finding under article one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a master bath and great room on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map one twenty-five, parcel one sixteen, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi.
Good evening, Jeff Bright, owner and operator of Synergy Home Improvements, on behalf of Richard and Jennifer Gorbady, the stated address, stated address there. As you can see in the plot plan, the extension and addition of living space behind the house at present is non-conforming to the existing setbacks, so requesting a written finding to build, as you see there.
Okay, so... This is R3, isn't it?
I think that is, and several pages.
So, your existing setback is thirty-one three from, is it Whamaset? Is that how it's pronounced? And from the Hoiden, it's, what, twenty-one seven?
Yeah, it's in the front deck, yeah.
All right, so it's a corner lot, right there. There's your hardship, a corner lot. So, we've got rather than two sides and a rear, two fronts.
Let's see addition four again, please.
Uh, a living room, a great room, as we would call it, uh, an enlargement of the master bedroom and a bathroom.
Yeah, I think... Is the guest room part of it, or no?
I'm sorry?
It's the guest room part of it.
The front room?
Right. Was that pre-existing?
It's existing, yeah.
Okay, so you're looking at...
They're extending the master bedroom, they're making the master bedroom bigger, they're not adding another bedroom.
Correct.
I mean, there's a door between the two, but you can't walk to a bedroom without a door to it.
So, what that does is creates, uh, here, and then over there.
So, this was the rear of the house. The dotted line between the kitchen and the great room?
Correct.
Is the existing? And it goes straight across, but you're cutting into it and just adding?
Correct.
Easy enough.
I just can't read on this plan, it's small. It says eighteen-foot proposed addition on piers, that's the great room.
Correct.
But behind it, it says something existing.
Eighteen existing deck?
Oh, yes, there, in the, the layout of the great room, there's actually a deck there at present.
Eighteen-foot existing.
Correct.
But it looks like there's something, like, two feet or four feet beyond the decks is existing.
Eighteen point zero existing, I see it.
Is that, yeah, that's what, okay, then why does the, why does the proposed addition have a different line than that? Or is that not?
Yeah, I can't.
Looks like...
Do you wanna look at it, what I'm talking about, 'cause it's a little confusing?
I would like to, yes.
That's something, if you see what it says, existing deck?
There's eighteen-foot the addition, but what is this, this right here?
The deck is eighteen wide, like, twenty feet out.
Oh, it's twenty feet out now, you're only gonna come out eighteen feet.
The addition is only eighteen out.
So, you're gonna eliminate that two feet, there's gonna be two feet of deck there?
No, no, that just goes away, but...
Okay, so that's, that deck was twenty feet.
Yeah, that was a huge deck.
And the...
So, the great room is becoming, excuse me, the deck is becoming a great room.
Basically, yes.
And it's getting two feet smaller.
Yes, two feet smaller, yes.
Instead of, the deck's twenty feet, the addition is gonna be eighteen feet.
So, that's why it said, existing eighteen, it's only gonna, so it's actually getting small down and then getting a, a structure put on top of it.
But it says, it looks like to me, it says proposed thirty-six point two feet, oh, no, it says thirty-three, okay, never mind, it says thirty-three three existing, proposed thirty-six two. No, there's no line. No, I can read it, there's no line, it doesn't say where it goes to.
This is a copy of the existing, as existing, the plot plan, would you like to see it?
No, I can see here it says existing, he wrote the numbers on here.
It's just the twenty point nine feet, actually, is where the deck is.
He started. Ah! So, there's your answer.
So, twenty point nine, so it's got, so the twenty point nine?
Yeah.
So, it's gonna go to eighteen?
So, they moved an septic?
Lot coverage, mathematics, so we had to...
Yeah, lot coverage is only nineteen, nineteen six.
Well done.
Yeah, it'd be trimmed somewhere.
Nineteen point nine six. Kevin, do you teach? It would've been nine nine.
Point nine. Well, wanna read in comments?
Yeah, why don't we send that down, so they can peek out?
Are you guys, are you guys, I'm sorry, are you guys clear on what we're talking about? Because it's hard to read that small plan. The old deck was twenty feet, they're actually gonna make, it might've been twenty point nine.
The old deck sticks out here and over there.
The addition's only gonna come out eighteen feet.
Yep.
So, it's actually smaller, and a lot coverage is good.
It looks like there's a couple of decks, a small one to the left, and the big one in the middle of the back, which is becoming...
Correct.
Great room, except for a few feet.
There's a, there's a grade, the deck on the back, on the left side in the back, is like a grade level deck. On ground, but it's...
So, really, uh...
Which is standing. Yes, yes.
All right, uh, do you wanna read some?
That one right there.
Correct.
Want to read some comments?
Yeah, but one question, is it, is it off the ground, or is it...
Well, slightly, yes.
It's slightly elevated, I walked around the house.
So, the question is, is it about a lot coverage?
Whether they're gonna be posing the build will be.
And that's figured in the...
According to the math that is here.
Because if it was a patio, it didn't need to be, correct?
Unexisting.
I just didn't wanna see you chip yourself, so to speak.
It would become what it would have to become.
All right. I have no issues.
I have no comment.
Brad? Any issues, questions? All right, before we get to the audience, why don't we read in some comments?
I am Board of Health, forty-five Nehoyden Road, the proposed additions, additions do not have a foundation, therefore no septic setbacks are infringed upon, so no septic inspection is required, floor plans do not indicate any additional bedrooms, so no increase in flow. Conservation property is not within conservation jurisdiction. Who wants to read inspections?
Uh, forty-five Nehoyden Road, the area is Zoned R3 and is in the pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a master bath and great room. The board will have to determine if the proposed additions would make the site more non-conforming. I should also note that a portion of the existing home is in the AE E111 flood zone, which means that the proposed construction shall be built in accordance with the FEMA
Okay, did we do conservation?
It's not in the jurisdiction.
Not within conservation jurisdiction. Secant, nope.
Nothing from DBW?
Twenty-one, twenty-one. This is, no, no. Twenty-one Metacomet. Twenty-one Metacomet. Missing anything? Twenty and wind, I think we got them all, didn't we? Okay. Any final comments, questions? Anybody in the audience? Any questions or comments out there? Seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Richard H. Gorbady of forty-five Nehoyden Road, under section one seventy-four seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a master bedroom, great room on property located, and a great room on property located in R3 zoning district, map one twenty-five parcel one sixteen Mashpee, Mass. Board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of written finding under Mass General Laws forty-eight, section six. Site plan, Goth Bright, forty-five Nehoyden Road, Mashpee, Mass, scale one inch equals forty feet, date six one two thousand and eighteen, Warwick and Associates, Inc., sixty-three County Road Box, eight oh one North, Balmouth, Mass, drawn by GSL, date eight eighteen two thousand and eighteen, checked by blank, I guess it wasn't checked.
It's stamped, though.
But it's not checked, okay?
Didn't have to check.
Ah, there you go.
Is there a stamp on there?
Yep.
Can you read it?
Yep, Gary LeBrie.
There's no requirement to be checked, as long as it's stamped, so...
It's here, signed by Gary LeBrie.
It says signed by Gary LeBrie, so...
Okay.
Sheet one of two, signed by Gary S. LeBrie, number four hundred three nine, registration, registered professional answerer, dated six twenty-six eighteen. Floor plans, Richard and Jennifer Gorbady, forty-five Nehoyden Road, Mashpee, Mass, scale one inch equals four feet, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, drawn by A Mora, Synergy Home Improvements, plan depicts garage, basement area, and main level living area. Elevation plans, one, Richard and Jennifer Gorbady, forty-four Nehoyden Road, Mashpee, Mass, scale one inch equals four feet, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, drawn by A Mora, Synergy Home Improvements, plan depicts east elevation, south elevation. Elevation plans, two, west elevation, addition, cross-section, and north elevation, conditioned upon all town department comments read into the record. I think that's it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Brad?
Jeff, Ron?
It is Jeff, thank you, thank you.
Jim?
In favor?
Yes?
Yes, I second it.
Ron? And yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back.
All sorts of people.
There's... Take them.
All right, let's see. All right, three, two, six minutes.
Need this? You have to, you have to write with them all, so... What, existing?
So, Sharon, you're on this one, and Brad, you're out on this one.
Oh, I have to recuse myself?
Okay, so, Brad, you're back in, Jim is out. Okay, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
Twenty-one Metacomet Road, owners, the Twenty-one Metacomet Road LLC Corporation, NJCJ LLC, request a special permit under article one seventy-four dash twenty-five dot I dot nine of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of an elevated walkway, pier, ramp, and float on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map one twenty-five, parcel sixty-three, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Vorselli from Balmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, James Whitney. Mr. Whitney is in the audience tonight, if there's any specific questions for him. We're here tonight seeking a special permit to allow a dock to be constructed on the property of Twenty-one Metacomet Road, and the reason we're before you is for a special permit, because the dock is in excess of seventy feet in length over a wetland, as defined by the... in length over a wetland as defined by the Department of Environmental Protection Wetland Regulations. The overall length of the walkway, ramp, and float from the most upper landwood edge of the wetland to the seaweed end is eighty-five feet. We have been before the Conservation Commission. There were two public hearings where the Conservation Commission reviewed the project. The initial hearing, some questions and comments were expressed. We continued the hearing, we had an onsite meeting with Andrew McManus and Rick York, who was the then Department of Natural Resource Officer. There were comments from the Harbor Master. Subsequent to all the comments and feedback, we revised the plan such that we shifted it to a position that minimizes, to the greatest extent possible, any wetland impact by reducing the crossing over the salt marsh to the least distance as possible, as opposed to in another position. If you see, the salt marsh widens in other places on the lot. So after a fairly comprehensive review, the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions. They actually put a condition into the order that asked us to do one other thing that we did. You have the revised plans, and what that one other thing was, was they requested that we change the ramp length from what was initially proposed as a twenty-four foot ramp that led to the float, but would require a longer pier. They asked us to eliminate two of the pilings and consider, well, they made it a condition not to consider that we install a longer ramp, so we made the revisions to the plan. So now there are only two pilings effectively in the intertidal zone, and those two pilings are just to secure both ends of the float in place. So the dock has been designed to minimize any environmental impacts, and we believe it's approvable, and we're asking for your permission to proceed. If I could add one more thing, I just wanted, we typically check the file at the zoning office to make sure, or to see if there's any other issues or concerns or referrals. So this morning, we, at, we contacted the office and talked to staff and asked if there was anything within the file, and they did forward us one email. Evidently, an email came into the office this morning from an abutter at nine twenty four. We received it midday, and it was a comment about the location of the dock being less than twenty-five feet to the property line. And we've, we're proposing the dock to be, meet the zoning setback. The email suggests that it's unlawful to have the dock less than twenty-five feet from the property line, and that's just wrong.
Let me read it for you. Let's see. It is from Susan Roth, who owns parcel sixty four. It's in a budding lot, it's a vacant lot, I was down there about an hour and a half ago, looking at the whole thing. Sent Wednesday, August twenty second at nine twenty four a.m. to Mary Ann Romero. Attention zoning board, twenty-three Somerset Road, Mashpee Roth property. Okay, to the Mashpee zoning board, I own the property along with my sisters at the above address. I do not want the Whitney property dock installed less than the lawful twenty-five feet from my property line that abuts this property. I understand that his dock engineer is trying to install a dock within ten feet of my property line. I absolutely do not want this dock to be any closer as I am hoping to install a float, dock, and ramp in the near future. Please allow dock laws to work as they are written. My family and my sisters' families would be grateful, thank you, Susan Roth and sisters. So do we have? What's the actual zoning setback on that?
They're on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could expand on that.
Please.
So a couple of things are just directly incorrect in the email. So I'm gonna just try to paraphrase, but the first sentence says that it suggests the lawful twenty-five foot. It isn't a lawful requirement, it's a policy of DEP in its, in accordance with chapter ninety-one.
Of who?
DEP, Division of Environmental Protection.
Okay, so that's their policy, twenty-five feet?
It's a policy, and the policy is twenty, and I'm gonna quote it to you, but I'm gonna just paraphrase now. It says twenty-five feet where feasible. It's very specific, and the reason it's specific is because there are a number of situations where it's not feasible. However, the, the basis for the requirement is so neighbors can coexist and not have impacts with each other's docks, and they can live in harmony and not impact each other with navigation. If you were at the vacant lot today, I have an aerial photo, I'll have it to share.
I actually got one too.
It's a bigger one.
The vacant lot is number twenty-three Somerset, which is the abutter to the south or left as you look at the water. That, that lot is vacant.
Yep.
It has in excess of a hundred and fifty feet, there's no dock. So it's clear from the aerial photo that if you were to propose dock on that property, there's more than adequate room for a dock to be installed so that they could be there in harmony. We located the dock here under the direction of the Conservation Commission to minimize environmental impacts. So you can see the catch twenty-two if we tried to honor the twenty-five foot setback. Therefore, it's not feasible to honor the twenty-five foot setback to some speculative dock that may be constructed in the future. As of right now, there's a vacant lot within excess of a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Your, your zoning bylaw, by the way, does not allow for the installation of a dock.
That's true.
Without a, a house, you need to have a primary use before you can have an accessory.
I agree.
True.
So second, there's a suggestion that his dock engineer, that must be me, is trying to install a dock. I don't, I don't install docks, I design them, so there would be a dock installer who would do the actual installation. And we're not trying to install it within ten feet, we're trying to honor the requirements of the Conservation Commission.
You can see the farther, the farther you get away from ten feet, the longer the dock's gonna have to be.
Yeah, and the, and the more.
And conservation is concerned about it, either they've already told you to pull back and make it along the float.
Yes.
Did you attempt to have it further from the lot, and they stated to you they'd rather have it closer to the lot with less wetlands in it?
Yes, because we always attempt to honor the twenty-five foot policy.
Where feasible.
Where feasible.
So did they come back to you and say, we would rather you be closer to the lot line and, and affect less wetlands, and so we're not worried about the twenty-five foot rule in this instance? Is that what you're saying?
They absolutely did say that, and we, we, we understand. Our next step is to, if, if we were to obtain the special permit, we would proceed to chapter ninety-one fi, uh, application, and there would probably be a question as to why it's not twenty-five feet off the property. It's routine, if possible, to get what they call a letter of no objection from a neighbor, and it's obvious we wouldn't get the letter of no objection from the neighbor, so we're, it's not feasible. So I can, I can, I can just tell you, I'm gonna quote right from three ten CMR nine point three six, paragraph two. Says, "In evaluating whether there's interference caused by a proposed structure, the department may consider proximity to an abutting property in the density of surrounding structures. In the case of a proposed structure which extends perpendicular to shore, the department shall require its placement at least twenty-five feet away from an abutting property line." And then it says where feasible. So the DEP implements the regulations by requiring these to be twenty-five feet apart when feasible, but when a structure is proposed within the twenty-five feet for other reasons, it's common to get a letter of no objection. However, if an abutter won't sign the letter of no objection, it doesn't in effect give the abutter veto power over a dock. So there's facts that have to be established before you can justify not providing the twenty-five foot setback.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that, please. You don't have one, or we can make one for you. Awesome. Mike?
I've got a question, because you were citing, I mean, this is outside of my area of expertise, but you cited a particular section that stated that an abutter can, can file an objection one way or another. So I'm not familiar with the process went through DEP and or conservation. So my question to you is, are, is the abutters notified? I mean, how do they know that something's getting too close to their property line?
Well, there's a couple failsafes if you, if you will. First of all, they were notified when we went to conservation.
Okay.
They were notified by this board. They clearly are aware of it because they commented in this case. But if you look just at the chapter ninety-one rules and regulations about notification, the only requirement is advertisement in a locally, local newspaper.
So then they're not getting the notification like this board does, we have to send out within three hundred feet. So Conservation or DEP, their only requirement is to put an ad in the paper, and I, I guess where I'm getting at, making a long story short, is, is whether or not this individual, she also sent a letter to Conservation or not. But from what I'm hearing is, if she didn't see the ad, the only way she became aware of the situation was because of the special permit comes with a ZBA, which required a three hundred foot prop.
There's one other way.
Did she show up at Conservation?
I don't recall, to be honest, but here's the failsafe of all of that. If, if she had no knowledge at all about any of the process, which she does, even miss, didn't get the certified mails, whatever happened. When I applied to DEP Division of Wetlands and Waterways, if the dock is proposed to be less than twenty-five feet from her common boundary, I need to provide them, if possible and if feasible, with a letter that states she has no objection. If she has an objection, and she won't sign what we call the letter of no objection, she has to give specific navigational and justification to it being less than twenty-five feet, and there's no merit to that. So it's just, it's just, it's not feasible for us to provide the twenty-five foot separation, and there's no justification on a vacant lot that doesn't even qualify for a dock today to oppose a dock that is less than twenty-five feet that we've placed there to satisfy sensitive environmental requirements of the Conservation Commission.
See, my thing is this, and, and it's not really in, in your ball field. It, it's the case of, when did she become aware of it? Did she become aware of it when it was going through the process with DEP and Conservation, or when it came before us because she received a letter? And that's the only question I'm really trying to figure out.
Well, she was, she became aware of it when she was notified. She theoretically was notified as an abutter when we filed with Conservation because she was a direct abutter.
I just wondered what she did.
So she got the same notification we sent out?
Yes, she got, and it was certified mail, and it was provide, and Conservation requires that we prove that we notified the abutters by certified.
So, so there was no appeal, she didn't seek adjudicatory hearings or anything?
She didn't appeal the DEP, um, the local Conservation Order of Conditions.
So you understand why I'm asking that, right? She said nothing there, but she's saying something here. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's the easiest one to appeal.
But she's not here to speak for herself, and.
No, I understand, but I'm trying to figure out.
We can just re-balance the issue.
Yeah, but the issue I have, and it's easily got around, is we don't really have anything from Conservation saying, gee, we know this is an issue, we said, don't go there. You can only, the closest you can go is ten feet. If I had something from them.
Well, we have, we have an order of conditions in your, that was submitted with the package approving the project in this location. You have that in your file. And with.
Was the question you brought up, and you asked, about whether or not they had tried to go to twenty-five feet.
Yeah, so, so here, the question I had was, did you depict on the original plan twenty-five feet from the lot line, and they say to you, or at least a draft, and they said to you, hey, we don't want it twenty-five feet, we want it ten feet because it would better protect the natural resource at being ten feet?
That's exactly, that's exactly what happened, and if you look at the title block on the plan that you have in your file, there are two, there's a date where we made a revision on June seventh, and it says revised pier location. The pier location was revised from the initial place, which was twenty-five, which is what we wanted to do until we discovered Conservation had some concerns. So the revision shifted it from the twenty-five to ten.
So I guess a better way to put it is Conservation has located that pier at ten feet off that lot.
They mandated it to be in that position.
They actually located it, they would've denied, I'm not putting words in your mouth, they possibly would've denied it at twenty-five feet.
It's very likely they would've denied it. Or, or we would've been faced with an appeal process that we probably wouldn't have.
So they actually lo, they wanted you to locate it within the ten feet, at the ten feet, no.
It would've been nice if their review said that.
Yeah, it would.
That's, that's the only thing I'm thinking.
Well, they're probably not aware of this abutter.
Well, I mean, they.
No, but either way, if, if, I really say it forward, but I'm just saying, if Conservation made a move.
They're less than twenty-five, they should be writing something.
Even though it should be twenty-five, that we directed the applicant the dock, that way we have that knowledge. We don't. All we got is one line of saying, we looked at it.
Can we condition it upon a letter from?
Absolutely.
Well, one other thing, just to make, you know, with all due respect, that what we're talking about isn't a zoning matter. This is a DEP Division of Wetlands and Waterways matter. This meets your zoning bylaw, other than the fact that we're required a special permit.
You have to come to us.
But, but you don't, the town doesn't have a twenty-five foot's requirement, is what I'm saying.
They're not looking for variance in that or anything.
I know, but they're seeking relief from us because they're, they're altering, they're going closer than, than the zoning bylaw. The distance of the wetlands.
There's no talk there, no.
We, we would be before you whether we were twenty-five feet off the property line or ten feet.
So you're asking relief from us, and I think, and I'm not.
Because it's over seven.
So you're asking relief, and what we're saying is, what Jonathan's saying is, well, I guess what I'm saying too is, is you're asking for relief, so that opens up this box that says we're gonna look at.
Sure.
Totality.
Sure, we're asking for a special permit to be crossing eighty-five feet of wetland, whereas if we were twenty-five feet away, we'd be asking for a special permit to cross about a hundred and five feet.
And, and I understand that, it makes sense, and my attitude is, is I'm leaning toward being okay with it because I'd rather not see it in that scenario, and more importantly, Conservation has approved it, which is really the, the most thing to me, and also the fact that with the vacant lot being next door, there is a lot of room there, but I frankly would like to hear from the audience when, when the, when the chairman feels that time.
I'd also like to condition it on getting something in writing from Drew that.
I have no problem with that.
They applied for twenty-five, we said no, you gotta put it at ten. He says that?
The minutes would reflect it too, we could.
Or he can simply write us.
Yes.
An email.
And, and from my standpoint, I might learn more from the audience when they speak.
Well, before we get to the audience, we need to read in some comments and, if anybody else.
I'll read Conservations. Twenty one Metacomet, this project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. We're in a lot.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna wait to say that.
Okay. Do you wanna read the Harbor Master comments?
Twenty, Twenty One Metacomet Revised Pier Plan. I have reve, reviewed the revised plans for Twenty One Metacomet Way, and my comments are followed. Based on the revised blueprints and reconfiguration of the original design plan, my opinion is that the dock will not impede the safe navigation of vessels. Therefore, I do not have any objections. Therefore, I do not have any objections to the project in this regard. Conditions: One, the dock must extend further out into the river...
Not.
Not. Yes, not. Into the river than other docks in a horizontal line down each shore to the left and right of the dock. Two, if there are any moorings in close proximity to the dock or which the dock will hamper the mooring holder's ability to leave and return from their mooring, the engineer will have to contact the mooring holder about the possibility of having their mooring moved. The engineer can contact the Harbor Master in order to obtain the contact information of the mooring holder. If the mooring is to be moved, it must be done by a licensed and insured mooring inspector, and the cost of the move must be incurred by the dock applicant. Sincerely, Alec J. Turner, Harbor Master, Town of Mashpee.
What else do we have?
Good Natural Resources has a comment.
Go ahead.
From Ashley Fisher. Good morning, Mary Ann. The dock proposed at 21 Metacoma has shown on the plan dated April 16, 2018, and revised on June 7, 2018, is not a problem for the town's shellfish resources. The property owner has compiled with the removal of a boat lift in two pilings per Harbor Master and Conservation Commission. Thank you, Ashley Fisher, Town of Mashpee, Department of Natural Resources, Shellfish Constable.
Mr. Chairman, that reminded me, the original plan also had a boat lift proposed, meaning, you know, a hydraulic lift that we eliminated.
Yeah. I don't have any issues, really. I'm just wanting...
Couple more comments.
Go ahead.
Border Health and inspections.
Go ahead.
Well, Border Health, no comment.
Inspections.
The area is zoned R3 and is also within the pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a special permit under Article 174-25.1, point I, point nine of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an elevated walkway, pier, ramp, and floor.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments? Come right up, one at a time, if you would, and you name an address for the record.
Well, believe it or not, my name is Richard Gorbady from 45 New Houghton Road, who you just talked about before. Anyway, we live in South Cape Estates, which is where the area is of this potential dock. I've been boating on Great River for 15 years, and I'm, I personally am shocked that the Harbor Master has approved this because that part of the channel is very narrow, and there are definitely boats moored there of, you know, people who live in our neighborhood. I'm surprised there aren't some other people here. And I'm also shocked that the Conservation Committee thinks it's fine because those are all sensitive areas for clamming, oysters, et cetera, et cetera. For us that live there, who appreciate the water, the cleanliness of it, the, all the stuff that we have, we just can't figure out why these groups would approve these things, and why we would have anything that would happen that could change, adjust, or affect the environment, the waterways, et cetera. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mark Burdis from 53 New Houghton. In regards to the abutter that wrote the email, I am speaking on behalf of the South Cape Beach Estates, actually. There's 150 families that live within that community. It's Whipperwill Circle and South Cape, all the, all the three or four roads that are in there, the main roads, and then the secondary roads, the whole group. The abutter contested, she was never notified via registered mail. She didn't, I guess, I take it she does not get the local paper. You know, this is what the president of the association just had texted me because he had been in contact with the abutter as of last night, and that's when the abutter had let him know that she received nothing. And that's why you've got an 11th-hour email that came into your offices today. And the, here's the chain of events, really, with Concom, too. When they made the original presentation, the, it was, it was close to the neighborhood property, which has some tidal, let's call them tidal ponds, little tiny pools that are right next to the abutters. There's a beach that the neighborhood uses, so we were concerned about that. And we actually have access, we have deepwater docks in the neighborhood, so if you had a mooring, you could actually, if you pay the dues, you actually utilize the dock. So it's kind of like having your own private dock. So that, you know, that's how it first started, the chain of events where it's contested by some of the neighbors in the neighborhood, brought to that attention of Concom. Concom went back and went through the process with Rick and the Harbor Master, and they came to this decision to move the dock closer to the abutters' property. But as I said, the abutter contested, they were never notified, and usually, and it happens, this is what happens, because when you make the initial proposal, that's all advertised. I actually, you have to request, or you have to go on site to Concom to see the revised plan. You, you get one copy in the beginning, but it's, the onus is on the, on the abutter if they want to continue and follow this along. And this abutter had no clue that this, this was going on. So the process moves forward. Nobody has, nobody's contesting anything, there's no issue. And I think there's a little bit of a handoff by local Conservation also, because they know that this 25-foot offset will probably be picked up at DEP. And a negative letter, here's what happens with DEP, by the way. If DEP sends registered mail to an address and it's not answered, it's checked off as a no, there's no, nobody contesting it. It doesn't mean that they have to receive it, that, you know, it could go undeliverable. There's a period of time, and it moves through the chain with DEP, and DEP approves the project. So it's not, it's as vague as the law, what the standards are for the 25-foot offset. It's, there's a series of events that can happen that can stop this at any part, as far as DEP's concerned, absolutely, the 25-foot offset. So what you're, what you're seeing for that email is a last-minute attempt because they never saw anything. The abutter claims that they never, ever saw anything via the paper, nor were they, they never saw any registered mail. So I don't know how that process works.
So she didn't know anything about Conservation?
Absolutely not. It's the first time she ever heard of it. She didn't, she didn't even know that this meeting was taking place this evening.
Yeah, where does she live, anyway?
She, she's off Cape. The president of my association, who put me here...
What's his name?
Is in direct contact with, he just texted me.
What's his name?
Darian Homer.
YR experience.
And he lives on the Houghton Road.
YR experience.
H-O-M-E-R?
Yes.
Then, knowing that you put docks in for a living...
Yes.
Have you seen this 10, a less than 25-foot approved very often?
All the time. We, we've been stopped from performance standards of moorings being in the proximity of where a flow in a ramp will go. And the previous Harbor Master, Perry Ellis, at, there's several docks that would not be approved because of moorings. There wasn't, there was never, they never said, hey, listen, you know, because these people wait long periods of time on waiting lists to get moorings, that we'll pick it up and move it with a paid, you know, have somebody else move it to another area.
Did you go to...
That wasn't an issue.
Did you go to Conservation?
One other thing I'd like to point out, you're, you're seeing the, that 150 for the, for the abutters' frontage, well, right next door to that is extremely large dock, okay? That, that's not being discussed because it's the second abutter over. So what happens, here's the concern...
Kushner, 23?
Here's, yes, here's the concern of this abutter, I believe, is one of the concerns is that if they had the ability to build a house on that property, and they had the ability, because they had the home, to go to a dock, now they're restricted, okay? Because the proximity to this dock is to the one on the opposite side. I haven't done, you know, I'm not, I haven't done the math or the engineering on that, but it's a, it's a concern that they will be restricted from being able to do their due diligence of being able to have a dock themselves, if they have a proper home.
I saw that dock from 23 Sammaset, I believe it is.
Correct.
Kushner?
Correct. And I believe he's related to...
Matter of fact, I went out to this proposed site, took a look at the area, and the dock was actually fairly close.
Exactly.
It was a pie-shaped lot.
See, now, being, being in the dock business and the construction, that's what happens, especially in New Seabree of all places, because these lot lines, they, if they project, if they, you know, imaginary lines project out into the water, they do intersect at a certain point. And that has, in regards to your 70-foot, the length, not just the proximity to go out into rivers and block navigation, but they also cross other lines, other property lines, so they intersect. So essentially, you could, if they were long enough, you could intersect all these docks and just have like a marina-style float system that everybody could share if they went out far enough. That's the whole, that's the thing. These lots are odd-shaped, and if you project the lot lines, this is what happens. But the, I can, I'm sure that you'll receive a letter tomorrow if you didn't approve this that would verify that this woman, who, there's a couple, I believe, I'm not sure, that own this lot have received no notification at all.
Her name is Susan Roth?
Yes.
Yes, and her sisters...
There's a couple of owners.
And her sisters own it.
Which makes it, where it would be confusing, I, you know, usually, normally if I want to contact somebody, I go right to the tax department because I know they get their tax bill. So, you know, that address or what, or any confirmation usually comes from that, especially if they've paid the taxes, you know they're receiving mail. So, you know, it's not, it's not a difficult process.
No, but as an applicant for, so filed for Conservation, correct me if I'm wrong, engineer-wise, you get a certified abutters' list from the assessor's office, which, once you send out the notification that is included in that certified abutters' list, you have handled what is required by law. If the certified abutters' list is incorrect as to where the mail forward or whatever else, that is not a burden of the applicant, okay? That would be, you've satisfied the statute by getting a certified abutters' list from the town assessor's office. Am I correct in that statement?
Yeah, can I speak to it?
I would like to hear that, because I think it's important that we understand...
Sure.
If the process was followed correctly.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what all that was about, but the facts are the facts. Step one, Conservation Commission requires us to get a certified abutters' list from the assessors, it's certified.
Right.
Those abutters are where the town sends the real estate taxes. That's why it's usually, we, where money is involved, you make sure you have the best addresses to collect it. That's what the law requires us to do. So we got a certified abutters' list, and they were notified, and we notified them by certified.
You had the return receipt specifically from this board.
Absolutely. And we submitted them to prove to the Conservation Commission we did it. Secondly, this board requires 300-foot notify...
Abutters to abutters, really.
And your staff, who is right here tonight and does a wonderful job, notified 300-foot abutters. If the abutter, for whatever reasons beyond our control, does not get notification, we can't control that. We satisfied the requirements. The only other thing I want to comment on is, if you look, the comments about the other dock on the second lot over, that dock is one lot removed, the dock itself is probably over 200 feet away from where our dock is proposed. If you can't have one dock on a vacant lot between two docks that are 200 feet apart, I, I don't know what to say to that. So there's no issues of navigation, there's no issues of shape of lots or anything like that. In fact, this matter that we're discussing is really a Chapter 91 matter that would be resolved, that the DEP doesn't see fit to allowing it to be 10 feet from the property line, we're, no pun intended, dead in the water and have to resolve it. But my experience with DEP is if it's not feasible, and I gave you the law, and the abutter objects with, it has to be a practicable navigation justified reason, they don't have what's called veto power to prevent someone from having a dock on their property when they can easily coexist. Your Harbor Master, your shellfish warden, your Conservation Commission have all approved this project.
I don't believe any of those groups considered the other dock, I'll be honest with you. And I, I don't know how, how that layout is on those lots. I'm just telling you that this woman claims that she was not notified, and that by approving this, you could be creating a burden on her ability to have the same rights as this gentleman's requesting right now. If he has a house where he could have a dock, and it encroaches on that, and DEP, you know, the offset doesn't apply, it just needs further investigation, I would say.
Okay, the question for either of you two is, how far between docks does it have to be? You said it was approximately 200 feet, correct? So if they wanted to put one in the middle...
The docks would be 100 feet apart. Docks all along Great Harbor, on Great River are much closer together.
Is there a standard?
There, yeah, and it's probably, I mean, the beam of a boat is about eight to 10 feet, maybe a large boat, 11 feet. So if you think about it, if two docks are side by side, each, you know, some distance off the common property line, an 11-foot beam boat and an 11-foot beam boat, taking into consideration fendering and enough room to maneuver, the two docks could coexist a distance of about 30 feet apart, easily. And we have a vacant lot that doesn't qualify for a dock that has 150 feet of frontage, I don't see there any issues whatsoever.
How about if it's a sailboat?
Doesn't, wouldn't, wouldn't matter. 150 feet or more of separation between docks is, is, I mean, just take a look at any marina, they coexist in very much tighter quarters. Absolutely no issue.
Yeah. I think the fact that the lot is vacant has no bearing on this, because they could always put a house and then a dock, so I think that's a moot point, but...
My only reason for picking up, sorry, Mr. Chairman, was it's, you know, speculating on where a dock may be on the lot, and right now, we know nothing about that. In fact, if, if the abutter proceeded with a dock application and wanted, I would assume they would attempt to be 25 feet off of our property line, because it's likely they wouldn't get a letter of no objection from my client. So if they were 25 feet off, and there were no environmental reasons to be less than 25 feet from the property line, the two docks would be 30, 35 feet apart, so that, you know, if she pushed it as close as possible to our property line, and two boats could dock to it, and not have an issue.
Sharon?
Well, I went out there, and I don't, I took one environmental course 25 years ago, but that would have been where I would have put the dock, like as far as environmental concern. But that's all I, I don't have enough expertise.
Brett?
I, I don't, don't have anything to say. No comment.
It's, it's hard to argue with four departments, three or four departments that have all said this is fine, as what we're approving, what they're asking us for, I mean, and what they're asking, what the problems are, falling under our jurisdiction, it's more of conservation issues and all that stuff. And if they're all approving it, I mean...
I'm only concerned that Susan Roth was not notified to go to the Conservation hearing. That concerns me.
But I can tell you, in order for them to file with Conservation, the law states that they have to get a certified abutters' list, which they had to do, they had to show the return receipts, so they've followed the law. If for some reason the assessors of this town have a wrong address or whatever it may be, how can the applicant bear that responsibility? When the law says, as it does for this board right here, certified abutters' list, and you have to prove that you sent it to that, that address, you're done, you're covered.
Mary Ann, do you approve that they received their notification for this meeting?
We don't get out.
Do you get anything back?
You mail it out to the certi.
I don't send certified.
But you sent it to the certified abuttered list, abutters list, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so if that list is incorrect, you have nothing to do with that because it's gotten from some other board.
It's stupid.
Right. And so if that list is incorrect, but they're still covered by the law, someone can, someone can stand in front of this board and say, I didn't get notification. But if the certified abutted list has her, that person's wrong address, that is not, there's no foul here whatsoever.
If I could just add one more thing, even if there, she still ha, she can object all she wants to the DEP Division of Wellands and Waterways at Chapter 91, she clearly knows.
She can appeal our decision?
She knows now. She, she knows because you got an email.
Yes, but she could have, and I am further with his, one of the easier permits to appeal, as you know, is a wetland. Because you can file it by sending a letter to DEP.
I disagree.
Really?
Because it's, a notice of intent is filed under two, there's two public hearings.
Local bylaw and DEP.
Yeah, so you have to go to Superior Court.
I understand that. But my point is, is that's still, you know what, I could, I could hire counsel to send a letter to the court at the same time, okay, send it on to the, and it's less than $2,000. It's less than $1,000 in my opinion.
Well, yeah, if we're going to speculate, I don't know that the DEP would not uphold a decision of the Mashpee Conservation Commission for an approval of a dock.
I understand. But that's in a good judiciary hearing, right?
Yeah.
But my point is, is if she didn't get notified because, because the certified abutter list, they didn't, you didn't send to the certified abutter list, I would be concerned.
No, we absolutely did exactly what we were, we would not have received the order of conditions from conservation.
So my attitude in life, having been an applicant thousands of times, and you, then they have done what was required by law for them to do.
One more comment?
Okay, we got two people want to talk.
Also, in the process, in the time span that's gone by on this, the, the conservation has changed the performance standards. So I would consider, prior to any approval here, that those are reviewed to make sure that what is, has been discussed here as far as the offsets from any other docks of the 30, any other, it meets those performance standards because now that's changed. Their performance standards has changed. Mashpee Concom came out with another set of rules.
We have a letter from Conservation that says they're all set.
I understand that. But with the approval of this, it, see, the performance standards might not affect this project at the time, but they're going to, maybe, who knows, I don't know this, is the abutter that's complained, the performance standards apply to her now because she does not have a house or a dock on that property. So she, it might, because the new performance standards are in place right now, it might prevent her from doing any of those things. That's, that's a consideration that you're, this is the depth of where we're going with this.
I can't see how we can be responsible for something that might or might not happen in the future.
No, no, understood. But it does affect, the performance standards does affect right now their ability, if you place this dock in that proximity. It does. And they'd have to be reviewed. Her future, her future would be affected by it, by the performance standards that are on the book now. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Richard?
I just have a quick point of order.
Just, yeah, grab the one.
Just clarification about the certified letter. A certified letter can go out. It doesn't mean that the person on the other end received it. Just, you know, I don't know what the rule is going out and having that signed form come back because this lady's saying she never got it and they're saying that they have the signed, you know, return receipt requested form. So I guess if we do have that signed return receipt requested form, great, then she's misstating something. But if we don't, then she hasn't really been hurt.
No, no, I think.
So I don't know, I'm just asking, just sending it is good.
Maybe I'm not being clear. As an applicant, as I've been an applicant several times.
Yeah.
My duty as an applicant to a conservation commission, my engineer's duty is to get a certified abutters list, so that I'm not guessing who the abutters are. I get that from the town.
Right.
They give me the addresses. I then send those out to those addresses and I keep the little tabs or whatever, the little green receipts, and I give them to Conservation Commission. I say, here, I've sent them. I proved that I've stuck, and that's the only task.
Right. Well, you had mentioned about, about the thing coming back.
But I'm just saying, as an applicant, if they had to have done that.
Right.
Because conservation wouldn't have accepted the application.
Right.
So my point is, is if she chooses to either not pick it up or wrong address, that is not a burden on the applicant.
I understand.
That's my point.
Okay. I'm just shocked that all this is approved with all the stuff about the estuaries, about sewers, about runoff, about effect of the rivers. It's just shocking to me as a homeowner there.
That's their expertise at their meetings.
See, as one person, as one person sitting on this board, I sit here and I see our harbor master saying, okay. I see our conservation commission saying, okay. And I'm saying, subject conditions or whatever, but okay.
Shellfish warden.
Shellfish warden saying, okay. And I get these, as one member, I'm getting these okays from everybody that have far more knowledge in reference to those areas than I do. So it's hard for me to sit here and say, she's not okay. But I'm, yeah, I sat in a conservation commission for 15 years, I did. But still, I get a problem going not okay. And I'm just being frank with you. It's not, it's not my expertise.
Mr. Chairman, one brief comment and I'm done. The new regulations that were alluded to by Mr. Bertis, the new conservation regulations about docks, they were promulgated unlike July 26th, have no bearing on either, either person's ability to have a dock. It's, it's a red herring. There's no issue with that. There are very subtle differences that don't affect.
Anybody else? Come right up if you would and name an address for the record.
Isam Hijazi. Isam Hijazi, 10 Sammaset Road. I'd like to speak on two points.
Sure.
One, as an abutter, I got, I received a letter in the mail. And I have seen all the neighbors pros and cons with their meetings in front of the house, on the street, talking. And there's a lot of politics going on. I support the project. And I like all my neighbors who are on Sammaset. And I speak also on behalf of half a dozen of them who are with the project. And also, as I speak as a professional in this field, I've seen what they have gone through. I have seen what the meetings that they have conducted and the changes. And I've seen, as an applicant, who I would apply for these variances and special meetings. And all what I sense from the neighbors on that, on that side of the field is just politics.
Thank you.
And I've seen some loading docks, I received a lot of ideas.
From, so conservation?
Both. And from, if you stand in front of the property, look to your right, loading docks, look to your left, you'll see the same. You look across the bay, the same. Some are wider distances, some are narrower distances. And I think we have to learn how to live together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm a little late in this process.
What's your name and address for the record?
And 4 Meta Comet Road.
I'm sorry?
4 Meta Comet Road. The name's Linda Sarkisian. And we were notified, I guess, as 300-foot abutters of this meeting. I've been somewhat aware of the dock being proposed because we belong to the South Cape Association and it is our common beach area. And I kind of looked and thought, everybody should, you know, if they have, they own the property, they're entitled to a dock. But I did come down here maybe a month and a half ago to look at it because I thought, well, you don't even know what they're building. You know, I was, anyway. So I couldn't really tell from the plan what they're building, other than it's very long and I heard it was six feet high. So it's a very sensitive area, but that already was discussed at previous meetings. So I'm not quite sure what this is all about. This meeting is just whether to move it within 10 feet of the property line? Or what is the appeal?
They're asking for a special permit to put this in.
To put it in.
And normally it would be 25. That's the DEP's requirement unless there's some extenuating circumstances, I understand.
Okay. And the special permit has nothing to do with the height of the project or the, the size of it or anything?
Well, the size has to do with it because
The length.
Under the town of Mashpee zoning bylaw, the section that was cited, if anything over 70 feet has to come before this board.
Okay. So if it was under 70 feet?
It wouldn't be here.
Okay, okay. So as an abutter, within 300 feet, basically, I'm going to be viewing this thing right now. I mean, not that my view has any bearing, but I'm looking, I'm trying to picture it and I can't picture it from the design. So from the front of the house, is that going to be a boardwalk that goes along flat?
Do you want to look at the photo right there? Come to, on the.
See at the bottom?
The bottom shows you the side view.
The bottom.
The very bottom, very down.
Down, down, down.
Yeah, see, there's the side view.
That's the side view.
So from the house, it's all going to be above ground?
Correct.
Yes. On pilings.
So not having seen this, I, I kind of didn't, I, I looked at this and I, I didn't really understand that. So from my perspective, that's huge. I think that's huge to our neighborhood association. That's, I, I was thinking this would be a boardwalk that would be flat. And then I like that it's going to be less out on the water. But we have, it's a very nice, whatever they are, saltwater pools. Anyway, I guess.
Conservation kind of dictates.
But you have, you are, it's not just the 10 feet, it's also because it's over 75 feet.
Over 70 is the reason why they're here.
Okay. So I guess on that, I guess I would like to say I oppose that it's over 70 feet, that I do think it will impact the 150 homes that share the small area next door. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. For the record, my name is Jim Whitney from 21 Meta Comet. I want to thank everybody for the criticism and the, the good words that they said. It's all part of the process. I think we've spent quite a bit of time going back and forth with the Conservation Commission, the clam warden, is that what it was like?
Shellfish.
Shellfish warden.
Yep.
And the harbor master to try to make this work for everyone. We originally did propose it a little bit further to the north. The association beach is all the way over to the end of my property line, which does extend straight out.
Could you show me where it is on that map? The association beach?
Right here.
Got it.
This is my property line here and this is where the docks go.
That whole green area is what land? Light green?
Yep, this is on my property and this piece is on the association land.
Gotcha.
So I just wanted to thank everybody and if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Did you in fact see a plan that depicted this dock 25 feet from your lot line when it first began?
Yes, I did.
And the Conservation Commission asked your engineer to move it within 10 feet, or at 10 feet?
Conservation Commission asked that we have a site meeting to go over, to go over it with the harbor master and the shellfish warden.
Okay.
Myself and the engineer, we all discussed it and came up with that this was the best plan.
And they felt that the location shown on that plan is the best spot to have that dock?
Correct.
You don't have a copy of that old plan, do you?
It's one of the, with us.
Do we have it with us?
I know I have it on my phone, but it's probably not that big, but it's one of.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you don't have it.
It's one of the revisions that's on there.
Conservation will have it. I would assume they would keep that.
I have to, I know.
Yeah, I'm just.
On record.
The initial complaint from Susan Roth was it was too close to the lot line. So that's where I'm focusing on. I agree with everybody here that three groups approved it. We're only here to give a special permit of over 70 feet.
Correct.
The complaint is it's too close to, close to the lot line. That's what I'm thinking. I want to see that, in fact, you presented 25. Conservation said move it to 10. We won't do 25. Move it to 10. I've seen this regulation right here. I understand it. Says we're feasible. So.
I think.
That's my issue. I want to see, I want to hear from Conservation.
I think my only comment to that would be that we are here for the 70 feet. The 25 foot is something that we're going to be dealing with in the next process, as far as I know. That's all I can say. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Chairman, are you saying you can't support the application unless we proved to you that we should, we did this?
I didn't say that. What I'm, what I'm looking for is something in writing. So maybe we could possibly condition it.
That's an easy condition.
Yeah. Because that, that's the complaint. Susan wrote, you're too close to my lot line.
And she has, if it's approved that way, if, as one board member is saying, if we approve it, and she has an issue with that 10-foot 25, she has resources to go fight it.
She can always go fight it.
And the way I'm also looking at it, if, if in fact you were at 25 feet, you would be requesting more than a 72 or 73 feet, you'd probably be 100 or 120.
I think it was 85 or 90.
We'd be, we're asking overall 85, we'd be asking for like 105 if it was 25.
So if you look specifically at what we are looking specifically at, a special permit to exceed the 70 to 80, what was the dimension again? I'm sorry?
85, which is the shortest we could possibly go.
Right. It would then, they'd be sitting in front of us saying, hey, it's no longer 85, it's 105. So looking, and I know that's looking narrowly, but it's still what our, you know, marching orders are.
In other words, what you're saying is they moved it probably north, I'm guessing. It would go more than 85.
Exactly. They moved it to the 25. They'd be in front of us saying, hey, wait a second. I'm no longer, I'm looking for additional 15 or 18 feet consideration. I'm looking for 50 feet above the 70. We might say, as one member, I might say, hey, move it closer to the lot line, you're only going to need then X amount of feet, which is far less.
And if we.
Could go in the other direction.
If we were forced to move it north again, we would have objections from the shellfish warden and the Conservation Commission.
And you're getting closer to the, to the association beach?
Correct.
I'm saying that where it is located for the environment, and I understand there could be some issues, but to deal with a vacant lot, but I still look at all the space, as one member, I'm fine.
The only other thing I want to hear from Conservation is that if it's at 10, Susan Roth has the ability to put in a dock someday after she builds a house, that there's enough room between the two docks.
Condition that too, I guess. I don't know how you're going to do it. I don't think they can even call that. I mean, I don't know how they can.
I don't know if we'd have a right to condition that.
She's complaining that potentially not going to be able to put in a dock for herself.
We have no idea.
That's, that's not, you know what?
I think that's where this whole thing's going.
Mr. Chairman and members, that if you think about this, when we're talking about a vacant lot that has over 150 feet of frontage, and if we're 10 feet off the property line in one application or 25, what's the difference? 15 feet. 15 feet isn't going to make or break where she can put a dock on it.
I've been up and down both of the Little River and that river. I boated on those rivers. I used to dock my boat on Little River. Much closer docks, extremely close docks on Little River.
We don't, you said there's 150 feet of shoreline she has. Is that on there or?
Susan's father, which is Mr. Kushner, owns that you're talking about.
His dock runs parallel with the property line, right here.
You'd have to look on the aerial.
So his dock on this line is here. My dock is here, they have.
That's the T, the T dock?
Correct.
Can I see it?
That's a family member of abutters.
So Roth and Kushner are related.
So this dock, there's a dock there and this dock is going right there.
I don't know how you can fit a dock between those two. I don't, I don't design docks. I don't do the engineering. I don't do any of that. It looks like you get a dock in it, no problem.
I would think so.
I know a close dock, there's docks, they're, they're up and down. That's what, that's the reason people live there.
Sharon? Brett?
I made my comment.
Anybody else in the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The boards that we depend on, I'll say it's, it's good, if it's not good to the abutter, she has resources to go fight it.
All right, I'd like to see it potentially conditioned.
I have no problem with the condition of the, showing that they, that Conservation moved it, I don't think we can condition it on hearsay if they can get a dock in.
Right, I, I don't think we need to condition it on them putting a dock in, I want to hear their feedback, though. If it's plausible, from Conservation to be able to put a dock in between the proposed dock and the other dock.
I don't know if they can do that, they're not engineers.
I don't.
I don't know if I can comment on that.
I can say it's feasible, and I'm happy to work with the abutter to get her a permit for the dock.
There you go.
Cause I think that's what's driving this.
I don't think that's what's driving it.
She sees someday down the road-
I don't think that's what's driving it at all.
I don't think it's up to us-
It's my opinion, I, I don't think that's what's driving it.
That's not us to protect that, they have not made an application, I don't understand, I don't see us protecting that.
Can I see that aerial view again?
We have an applicant in front of us that has made an application for a dock that has gotten, obtained approval from every single agency that they're required to get that approval from. And I, I agree, I have no problem with Conservation saying to the applicant, conditioning upon approving to this board or to the enforcement officers, zoning enforcement officers, that in fact, they did one time make an application at ten feet, and the Conservation Commission asked them to move it to twenty-five feet, I have no problem with that condition, but any other condition that references other things, I wouldn't ask you to make the motion.
I didn't, I didn't say condition it.
Okay.
I wanted their feelings.
So how do we do that?
Below condition.
In other words, is it wide enough, in your opinion, to put a dock?
I've been boating since I was fourteen years old, okay, I can tell you, you put six docks between those two, and I would put my boat there, if, but it's not deep enough, and I'd have no problem doing it. Okay, there's no question, now whether you can do it from a standpoint of approval process, I don't know, but a hundred and fifty feet? With a bow thrust and a stern thrust, you can dock sideways.
Do we? Don't we show this as a hundred and fifty?
Well, I'm just taking it, I'm just listening to what applicants-
It's quite a bit of-
History has been honest with this board, and I'm giving him the benefit of the doubt that he is an honest gentleman, and he's saying it's approximately a hundred and fifty feet.
Well, you can, it's, it's scaled right there, you can measure it right there, that's the lot on that plan.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, Mr. Borselli, I make you work, but you can give us relatively close to what that exactly is.
So a hundred and fifty-eight feet? Hundred and fifty-eight?
So put five docks in between.
And if-
For us to do it.
And if I could, I just, I don't want to make it too, too difficult on anybody, it's just, we're asking for the relief on the seventy feet.
I agree.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, just people with far more knowledge than myself have said yes to this application.
And we're approving the seventy feet.
Right.
All right, let's condition it. I don't think the ten feet or twenty-five feet is our business.
I don't either. Unless there's a written bylaw that says it.
I don't think the problem is the way Conservation wrote their review.
I agree.
If they had written that, you know, we, we-
Do you want to be the person that this board, I'm gonna make the motion, I agree with you.
You're gonna stick it to me anyway, it's such a point.
All right, so you're okay with that?
I didn't say that, I just, I know what you're gonna do.
Sounds to me like you said you were okay with it.
Okay. Any final comments by anyone, before we make a motion? Ron, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Twenty-One Metacomet Road LLC, care of NJCJ LLC, at Twenty-One Metacomet Road for the, under section one seventy-four dash twenty-four, period I, period nine of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an elevated walkway, pier ramp, and floater property located in R3 zoning district, map one twenty-five, parcel sixty-three, Mashpee, Mass. Making the motion and issuing the special permit, the board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under Mass General law forty-eight, section nine. I make reference to a site plan proposed for Twenty-One Metacomet Road, prepared for, for James Whitney and Mashpee. Plan date, April sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, plan scale one inch equals twenty feet. Revised pier location, six seven eighteen, prepared by Falmouth Engineering, seventeen Academy Lane, suite two hundred, Falmouth, Mass, project number one six zero nine seven, CAD file number one six zero nine seven DPNEW. Drawn by LM Sheet One of One, signed by Michael Borselli, professional civil engineer, number three five zero five four. In making this motion, I make reference to and want to condition upon all town department comments read into the record. I'd like to also make a condition that the applicant obtain evidence that he, he or she made application to the Conservation Commission depicting a ten-foot setback, and was asked by the commission-
No, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
No, a twenty-five foot setback, and was asked by the commission to locate it closer to the property line at its existing location, which is approximately ten feet from the property line. That can be shown and depicted in either minutes or a letter from the commission, Conservation Commission. But it has to be shown to the zoning enforcement officer of this community.
So it's conditioned upon that. All right?
How's that?
Are we ready?
You accepted the responsibility, I asked.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Correct, one correction, there's a, a follow-up revision that you didn't quote, is that a point of order, is that necessary?
Yes, it's in-
There was a further revision where we eliminated two pilings and made the ramp longer, so what was the date of that revision? Seven twelve eighteen.
So I'd also like to add into my site plan revisions, uh, one, how many pilings, two pilings were removed? Two pilings were removed and the date again was seven twelve eighteen, that's in addition to my site plan revisions, prop, read into the record.
Second, Brad?
Yes.
Sharon, you vote yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Right, so is that, that's not the latest plan then?
I don't know.
I, I didn't read the revision, I read the, this is the latest, I just want to make sure.
What's it gonna say, right up here?
Seven twelve.
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
That took a long time.
Yep.
We just kept talking about the same thing for half an hour.
Is there, I'm gonna need another one of these?
There's only one?
Oh, it's gotta be in this pile, sorry.
Thank you. Twenty-two, hey, place is empty now.
We needed you in that one with the Conservation background. What'd you think?
Well, everyone said it was okay, what did you do?
Yeah, exactly, I mean, it's not our- We're not Conservation experts.
That's number two, you can't do it under speculation that she won't.
She may never build a house there. I don't know, when I was on Little River, the dock next to me was twenty-five feet away, thirty feet away, dock near the side was twenty-five. You can't navigate, you can't navigate it, not a hundred and fifty feet, maybe you should not have voted.
You know, I know the guy from Lemonsdale.
She has resources to, I could if she wants.
Yeah, I haven't had any yet either.
I didn't see the second page.
You wouldn't have been so vociferous if you had.
Listen, I wasn't.
There's only one in the second page. That's, you have, you have, um- It's not as bad.
We miss any paper?
I don't know.
We got everything?
Yeah, there's two more in the front.
Yeah, we have three more to go. Why, so you put that page in?
We ready to go? We ready to go? All right, Sharon, would you read the-
Twenty Linden Road.
Next to here.
Owner Richard E. Haller, Hallerilak, request a special permit under article one seventy-four, forty-five point four of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in an R5 zoning district, map twenty-eight, parcel sixty-three, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi. My name is Richard Hallerilak, I'm the owner of Twenty Linden Road, chairman, members of the board. I started this project quite a few years ago, and I ran out of money, and so it sat for quite a while in the process. In the meantime, I did a lot of work out of pocket, so I have a freestanding, weather tight building, ready for electrical and plumbing. When I first started the project, it was an accessory building without a kitchen. When I went to reapply, the building commissioner had suggested that I might as well go for a full apartment, so that's what I'm doing. I also had to take a bedroom out of my house in order to satisfy the Board of Health to do that, which I've already done, so I've taken a three-bedroom house and turned it into a two-bedroom house in order to do that.
Just a question. This little map we got here, the blackened in area is the proposed?
Well, there was some question as to whether or not it could be a freestanding building or attached. So the way I have the building, I could do either or, so I submitted a plan with an attached building. But as it stands right now, there's only a deck between the two buildings.
Why don't I go over with you what the bylaws says? Accessory apartments. The principal dwelling unit shall not be occupied by anyone other than the property owner as listed on the latest recorded deed, that would be you. The applicant must provide documentation endorsed by the Board of Health as its agent that the proposed accessory apartment conforms to all state and town health and sewage disposal regulations. The design, installation, use of an accessory apartment shall be secondary and incidental to the principal use of the structure as the owner's home, and the apartment shall be located within the same structure as the said home. Gross floor area of the accessory apartment shall be not less than three hundred square feet, and not more than forty percent of the gross floor area of said structure on the date the special permit application is filed. Accessory apartments shall be self-contained, with separate sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities for the exclusive use of the occupants. Minimum of two bedrooms in an accessory apartment. Excuse me, maximum of two bedrooms in accessory apartments. Room, rooms which might be converted at some future time to a bedroom, such as studies, studios, libraries, and the like, shall be counted as bedrooms for the purposes of this section. Exterior design shall be consistent with the principal structure's predominant character as a single-family home. Parking, one off-street parking space shall be provided for the accessory apartment in addition to any other off-street parking requirements. Couple more, no new driveway curb, driveway or curb cut shall be created to service the accessory apartment unless the board determines that due to the severe topography or other constraints on the lot. And the special permit granted under this section will run with the property owner, that's you, and shall lapse upon sale and or transfer to another property owner. So I guess the question is, does it have to be part of your structure? Absolutely.
Okay.
So the applicant, where do we go here?
It's open on the first floor, it's connected on the second floor, so I guess you'd say that it's connected.
I left that open on the first floor so that you could get to the backyard without having to walk all the way around the building.
I mean, it's connected on the second floor, would you consider that connected, Mike?
Yes. We also have to consider the fact that this is a project was cited how many years ago?
It was started fifteen years ago, and the town bylaws were a little bit different.
That's something that the board has to take into consideration.
But you didn't get a building permit fifteen years?
I have, right here. But it wasn't, it wasn't ongoing.
Oh, it wasn't on-
What's the date of it?
You see what I'm saying? Two thousand and three.
Uh, what month?
July.
Okay, when was this updated last?
Hang on, hang on.
Right there, or?
Well, there's different parts of it, that's all we have here. So, uh, it was added in, a couple of months later, October twentieth, twenty, two thousand and three, approved by the Attorney General of November fourteenth, two thousand and three. And then, uh, then in oh five, there was an amendment, then there was another amendment in oh four, that's when it approved by the AG's office. There was an amendment in oh four which approved by the AG's office the same year, then he had another amendment in oh four. So, basically, as I stated a few minutes ago, the world was different when this gentleman started the project, but as he stated, as he had the money, he, he worked on it, so, but here it is.
But there was a time when he may not, for whatever reason, like I say, he didn't, he didn't work on it, and so the-
I'm not saying that, all I'm saying is when he came in to renew it, oh, if you want to call it the permanent lapse, I went, whoa, legally, I can't, because Massachusetts State Building Code is quite specific, you know, you've got six months after that.
He didn't ask for any extensions or something like that.
No, I did, I did not, no. And-
Where does that leave us?
He didn't ask and you didn't, you didn't give.
You weren't here.
I get it, I get it, I get it.
You're gonna get it, yeah.
So where, where does that leave him?
So, so, what, what, right now, he has an updated permit, but first we have to address the issue regarding zoning. And so, we got a project that started fifteen years ago, but at that time, didn't require, was required now. So for me to be able to grant him a permit, I need this.
And it's gotta be brought up to date?
Well, the work that's been done. I can meet all of those, no problem. Right, as long as he can do it.
So everything I-
It's almost like looking at it like he's just bringing it out.
Everything in there I can-
The three hundred square feet?
Yep.
Maximum two bedrooms, that stuff?
I wouldn't put two bedrooms in there anyways, but, no, the way it, it's designed, you couldn't do it.
My concern for you is, you just made it say that I can meet, but your plan has to depict the fact that you do meet. Like parking?
I do meet all of the criteria.
I think you need to like look at the parking issue, it has to be a separate parking area, right?
I don't know if it says that, let's go back.
I'm just concerned that there's a couple things you may have to change in this application.
Well, you're putting a garage in.
Let me read it, notwithstanding the provision of one seventy-four dash thirty-nine, at least one off-street parking space shall be provided for the accessory apartment in addition to any other off-street parking requirement. So, it doesn't have to be separate?
Isn't there a driveway to this garage, isn't there a driveway to?
There's a, it's a long driveway, I could put probably six cars in there on the driveway.
I know, it doesn't show the other driveway to the other-
Doesn't show on the plan?
Oh, it doesn't show?
No, you must have two driveways.
That's what I was saying, if it showed on the, we're, we're, if, if this gets approved, this is what the plan we're gonna depict, and it doesn't show a driveway to the garage, so there's no parking lot, parking spot.
There's gotta be a driveway to that structure somewhere.
That's what I was saying.
See this stone driveway, this, yeah, engineer, this goes-
Oh, it sweeps right around.
That line is the driveway to the back house.
See that sweeping line?
Oh.
It goes-
What you s- What you see on-
Two per dwelling unit, but this case, three, you're correct.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way maybe that the applicant can draft to put something on this plan in addition to what's already here?
I agree. So we need minimum-
I'm gonna make it as easy as I can for you.
We need a minimum of three parking spots, I'm sure you can find three.
Plenty of, plenty of space.
I think that existing driveway has enough on it, it's forty-eight feet long.
You can see why I made the statement.
Yes, yes, and he understands why-
So this curvy line is going to be a driveway going to the-
It is already existing.
That's already existing.
It already has a driveway.
Where's, where's the entrance to the garage, over here or here or? So they, in other words, you're pulling right in this way.
So if, if I'm correct then, this line goes like this, right? And that, so you have a driveway from here to here, and it goes all the way like that, is that correct? So that's like this, so they can park a car there, no problem.
They can put two cars.
Right, so my point is you're gonna have to probably initial this, we're probably gonna have to continue that line, have to initial this or something so that we have a planned record that we can-
Do you agree with that?
I'm fine with it.
Do you agree with that?
I'm fine with it.
Try and make it as easy as I can so your 15 years can come to a sudden halt.
Don't you initial, then I'll sign it.
There you go.
Turn that over, hit the button.
And just if you can write just driveways so we know what that line is. Okay. There you go.
Perfect.
You got it. There you go. So you wanna do this one too, that way up too?
Sure.
Thanks.
For some reason, I think you may be asking me to make the motion.
And date it too, if you would. Sign and date.
Twenty seven, right?
Eight, twenty-two, eighteen, and...
More than half.
Okay. The initials on it, good.
Yep.
Did you look this over?
I looked it over. I mean, I'm okay with because...
To meet all the requirements?
It's another, there's actually, the second access is a connection to the house, right there, you know what I'm saying? The way it comes through connects along the side of the house.
Yeah. But they have the second floor walks right through, so I was too concerned about it. I understand that he looks like a breezeway to walk through.
Yeah. It makes, it all makes sense.
Okay. So, let me get back to page 86. Just to check these off the box.
What's the plan?
The plan he just signed? Sure, I'm gonna have to amend my motion.
Why, what will you need me to do?
Okay. Accessory apartment shall be self-contained with separate sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. Where is the separate cooking in here?
Is the kitchen first floor?
Stands first floor.
Ah-huh.
Get all those special...
Thank you. So you probably wanna make that as part of your description, that's a two-level apartment.
Well, when we refer to the plan though, wouldn't that itself?
I'm just...
Because house plan, it shows page one of nine, first and second floor.
And it's not more than 40 percent of the gross floor area. Okay. I know this comment's around here somewhere. Any other questions before we go to comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Make a suggestion?
Please.
Because of the age of this project, if the Board sees fit to grant this, a condition be put that the fire department looks at these plans for smoke detectors.
Absolutely.
How about we just say fire department approval? For whatever reason.
Wouldn't that fall into...
For all of it?
No, because it's pre-existing.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
That's, that's all it is because...
Cause he's not pulling out a permit.
What I don't want to have, what I'm trying to do is prevent the problem later on...
From the final inspection.
On the final.
Yeah.
Then the fire department's gonna say...
Are you guys gonna mark a smoke detector thing?
No, we have the fire department come to my office and we do the review. So what I'm trying to do is prevent the hiccup. Later on, at the final, that the fire department goes, we never saw the plan. I would just go, wait a minute. I wanna nip that now.
Must obtain fire department approval.
You're gonna have to supply a plan.
Does the fire department...
No, you have to supply him a plan.
Ah.
Yeah. But normally, or, or an alarm company would do it.
Yeah.
If I was pulling a permit for a new house, your alarm company would supply the plan showing all the smokes.
Should I go to the fire department tomorrow?
No, you come to my office.
He works, he works out of his office.
Depends on what this board does tonight.
Yeah.
Sharon.
Yeah, there, we're getting...
But I'm just trying to dot the i's across the t's. I wanna make sure everything's taken into consideration.
Sharon, would you read the inspections?
Inspections.
Time, 15 years.
Inspections.
You see it?
20 Linden Road.
Hold on one second.
Inspections.
Go ahead.
Can I help you?
20 Linden Road. The area is zoned R5 and is in a pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as moderate. The applicant are seeking a special permit under Article 174-45.4 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment to be part of the first floor of the garage and the entire second floor of the garage. The Board should confirm that Article 174-45.4, C., period, the gross floor area of the accessory apartment shall not be less than 300 square feet nor more than 40 percent of the gross floor area of said structure has been complied with.
Brad, would you read conservation?
Conservation comments, 20 Linden Road. Property is not within conservation jurisdiction.
Okay, what else do we have?
Board of Health.
Go ahead.
20 Linden Road. Board of Health comments. Dwelling limited to three bedrooms. Bedrooms in the apartments has been added with the removal of a bedroom in the main dwelling for a total of, count of three.
Okay. 20 Linden, this one. We got something from DPW, don't we? Yes, we do. Why don't I read?
Here we go.
Okay. Brad sat on the last one. Okay. Brad, you're gonna sit out. Sharon will be on this one. So, let's see. This is an email from Catherine Laurent dated Monday, August 20th, to Mary Ann Romero. Hi, Mary Ann. The site plan submitted with the application for the above does not delineate the minimum parking spaces required for the principal dwelling and the proposed apartment. If the special permit is approved, I would recommend a condition that imposed, condition be imposed requiring the applicant to provide all parking on-site. Note that the exterior stairs to be constructed will affect the use of the garage below the apartment for parking of vehicles. Thank you, Catherine Laurent.
No problems. That's why I swung in.
Okay. I don't think we have any more comments, do we?
I don't think so. I don't even have that.
Anybody in the audience? Seeing none? Run?
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Richard E. Haraluk of 20 Linden Road under Section 174-45, period four, zoning bylaws allow for accessory apartment, property located in R5 zoning district, MAP 28, parcel 63, Mashpee, Mass. Okay.
Well, you can touch yours down.
I gotta hear your second one. Yeah, that's me. Okay. And issuing the special permit, the Board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of special permit under the Mass General law, 48, Section 9. Condition also upon the certified site plan, 20 Linden Road, Mashpee, Mass, dated July 10th, 2018, scale one inch equals 20 feet drawn by RBS, job number S465, DWG, CPP revised 7/1918, also revised, today's date, 8/2218, by the applicant and signed by the applicant. And the revision was the location of the driveway and parking to meet the zoning, existing zoning. And that is depicted on the plan and again, signed by the applicant. Also, and continue on, corrected, that revision of 7/1918 was to correct the road name, eastbound land, and it was drafted by Eastbound Land Surveying, Inc., PO Box 4424, Steel, Mass. 02644, signed by Rob Sykes, PLS number 35418. The house plan, one-car garage with one-bedroom apartment, scale one-quarter inch equals one foot drawn by REH, date July 2018. Location, 20 Linden Road, Mashpee, Mass. Second-floor plan, page one of nine. First-floor plan, page two of nine. Driveway, left-side elevation, page three of nine. Right-side elevation, page four of nine. Front elevation, page five of nine. Rear elevation, page six of nine. No title for page seven of nine. Cross-section and framing, floor framing, page eight of nine. No title for page nine of nine. Also, condition upon all of town departments' comments read into the record and also, prior to the issuance or submission of a buildingment application, the applicant must meet and must obtain all approvals from the fire department of the town of Mashpee.
Do we have a second?
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Good luck.
I need, yeah, a little more on house plan. Oh, lots of paper.
Yeah, I figure.
Okay. Hey. Did you all set?
Yep. You're all set.
All set.
Yep.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
I didn't know what to do, you know, 2003, I'm going, you want a permit now to finish this? I go, ah...
He used to work for the town.
Yes.
He did?
Really?
He actually was in the building department for a very short time.
He was?
Yeah, he was in DPW.
What was he in the building department?
He worked for DPW for a number of years.
Yeah, remember he worked in the building department for a very short time?
What did he do with the building department?
Inspector.
Built.
Commissioner.
He's a licensed builder.
He was the commissioner. It's been all downhill since.
Well, I don't remember him at all.
He wasn't there very long.
Let's talk about...
It was really short.
I don't remember that.
None.
I bet it was...
Okay. Is that everything?
Nine years ago.
That video, 30 years.
Yeah, it was very short.
Back to my first building, maybe 30 years ago.
Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
23 Treasure Lane. Owners, Paul F. and Patricia Torni, request a variance relief from frontage and lot size under Article 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 96, parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Kevin Corain. I have the pleasure of representing the Tornys in connection with the proposal before you to raise an existing building and replace it with a new code compliant building. The lot in question has some 10,000 square feet. It has 100 feet of frontage on Treasure Lane. The existing structure is a two-bedroom structure containing some 768 square feet. The property is developed with two bedrooms. It was built in the early 60s. There's also a shed on the site with an attached wood deck to the dwelling. As I said, the applicants are proposing to remove and replace this particular structure with a new dwelling which is about 500 square feet larger than the dwelling that is there currently. There will be some finished space in the basement. They will be converting the two-bedroom dwelling to a four-bedroom dwelling. This request is some, not unlike the request that we made relative to Amy Brown Road and also Hamblin Road, where we're proposing the construction of a new dwelling that conforms in all respects to current zoning. It meets all the appropriate setbacks and both side yard, rear yard. Front yard is the average, as you'll see a note on the plan, and I have attached a letter from Downcape Engineering to demonstrate how they calculated the front yard setback based upon the average of two buildings, or in vacant lot and another building on one side. So the relief that we're requesting really relates to the lot size and the frontage. Because some might argue, although some towns, you would not be required to get this kind of relief. And, and based upon recent conversations I've had with the building commissioner, I think he was actually proposing a bylaw change that would place the authority within his purview to grant a permit where you are simply dealing with a lot size deficiency or a frontage deficiency, but the structure actually conformed to all requirements of the zoning bylaw. We're well within the required 20 percent lot coverage. And one of the reasons why we're suggesting replacement is that this building, as I said, was built in the 60s and it sits on a series of concrete blocks, holding up the four corners. There would be a significant additional expense if one tried to bring the appropriate contractors in to lift this building and then to construct a foundation beneath the building. It would add about $50,000 to any kind of a construction project, which I would suggest to the Board would work a significant hardship upon the Tornys.
Right, 40 in those days.
There is a new septic system that is being proposed in conjunction with this application. It is replacing a cesspool which exists on-site. As I said, the new foundation will be built and the structure would be built upon that new foundation. It will comply with all present-day building code requirements. It complies with all present-day zoning setback criteria. And I suggest to the Board, as it had found in those two other matters that I recently represented clients for, it's really a question, some people interpret, if you remove an existing structure, that you lose all the protections you have and that you no longer have a buildable lot. So what we're doing is trying to protect the applicant in this particular case to get the appropriate variance relief from the lot size and the frontage so that we do have a buildable lot. And it makes far more sense to do it, the construction in this fashion than it would be to try to do it in a piecemeal fashion, to lift the building, place a, a new foundation under it, and then add on to it. Representatives of the Torny family are with me this evening. Mr. Torny, his, his daughter and son-in-law, and we're more than happy to respond to any questions, our concerns that the Board might have.
Just one quick, quick clarification. Says new addition and remodeling. Just for clarification.
Steve Cook from Kattua Bay Design, that's just a typo. Originally was gonna be addition, remodel. We switched to new house, so...
Just if we have to read in the plans though, just one...
We can change that.
Clarification on that.
I wish you were at the meeting. Who's the owner? I wish you were at the meeting, because we're all for this. And I'm looking for a reason to give you this. But we've turned down these. Is there a way we can give you a variance?
That's what I've applied for.
Right. You know what's needed for variance? One of three things.
One, I think we have a hardship. The hardship in this particular case relates to the, the size of the lot and the frontage on the lot and the structure as it exists on the lot. The structure is such that it is a dated structure and it would add about $50,000 to the construction cost if one were to try to do it, other than a complete raise and replace. And I don't see, the Board did favorably act upon the Hamblin Road project, which was the Moran project, which was a similar situation.
You had water setback.
Which was a similar situation. We, we brought the building in compliance with the setback criteria, but the lot was still too small. The frontage was still less than what was required. And on Amy Brown Road, we did the same thing. On Amy Brown Road, the lot was too small and the frontage...
I agree.
The Board did act favorably upon those two requirements.
Wilson's Grove too, right? Didn't we do one in Wilson's Grove?
That was another situation.
I was, I was not around for that.
There was a hardship there.
Were those fire, the town councils, the city, the opinion?
No, what they were, you got a variance because of setbacks from the wetland. So we need shape, topography, or soil condition. Am I right?
That is one of the criteria for the grant of variance relief. And I would argue that the, that the size of the lot and the, and the, the reduced frontage that it has creates a shape condition that would permit the Board tack favorably upon the request, just as it has done in the past.
I am all for this project. We have turned down these unless we can get some sort of, any reason why? I'd love to.
All right.
And I would argue that the size of the lot and the reduced frontage that it has creates a shape condition that would permit the board tack favorably upon the request, just as it has done in the past.
I am all for this project. We have turned down these unless we can get some sort of, any reason why? I'd love to.
All right. About two months, maybe three months ago, Main Street, the lot size requirement for that area was 80,000.
We had a topography issue. Thing was on a hill like this.
Well, the portion with the.
It's tough to, it's tough to raise issues relative to shape, size, or topography when you're dealing, you're dealing with lot, lot issues where in order to get relief, you've got lots that you cannot add on to the lot because you're in a development that was developed back in the 50s, in the 60s.
I agree with you.
You know, and we're not seeking relief for the building. All we're doing is seeking relief for constructing a building within the requirements of the zoning, we're meeting all the appropriate setback requirements.
Kevin, do the applicants know the history of this? Have you had a discussion with them as to what's going on?
In what respect?
In reference to us going to town meeting, trying to get a new article passed, et cetera, et cetera, in reference to raise and replace.
I haven't had a discussion with, well, I may have had a discussion with Melissa briefly, talking about how everything was in a bit of a state of flux. But frankly, I also indicated that I have been before this board within the last three months or four months, and the board has acted favorably on two of these very exact type of requests, based upon the size and the lack of frontage on the lots.
It was really based on your wetland setback.
No, it was the lack of frontage on Amy Brown Road was one of the issues, and lack of frontage and lot size was the issue on Hamblin Road.
If. If I can. Once again, on the history aspect of it, a lot of it on the raise and replace dealt with setbacks, lot coverage, location of the building on the lot. This is a different type of apple. What we're talking here is about the lot size itself.
They're meeting setbacks.
They're meeting all the setbacks.
Which is different than the ones we've had problems with or having problems with because they don't meet setbacks, because the old house was.
I agree.
Because, because that's what I'm saying, we're looking at, it's like, like, take a look at a car. We're not looking at the tires, we're looking at the engine. What we're looking at here is solely the frontage and the lot size. That's the way I'm looking at it. It's, the question comes down to, is, the thing is, and I'm not putting words in councilor's mouth, but as long as he can demonstrate that the lots in those areas are all less, more or less the same thing, you're conforming with the neighborhood. Because if every lot is 100 by 100, we'll say, it is what it is. Those are what the lot sizes are. What the board's been strung before was a factor on the raise and replaces. Instead of being like they're proposing here in complying with zoning, instead of being, we'll say, the 40 feet, they wanted to be 19. That's a horse of a different color.
Right. All the issues that have been raised relative to knockdown and rebuilds, and really, it only started with one particular scenario down in Pompaneset. And that was a scenario where you were seeking to either maintain existing non-conformities or increase those existing non-conformities. This is a totally different animal. In fact, as I said, in some towns, building commissioners take the position that you don't lose your protection because of the fact that you're removing the building, as long as the new building that's going up conforms to the requirements of zoning. In this particular case, the dwelling does conform to the requirements of zoning, and I guess, you know, the issue would be, do we interpret it just because you're knocking it down and you're replacing it with a new, this is a non-conforming structure. If you're knocking it down and you're replacing it with one that conforms, are you gonna lose your protection? Do you lose your protection?
That's why we went to town council on this.
And town council says you do. Which I, I'm not an attorney, but I totally disagree with. And I went to my attorney and he totally disagreed with it. But you know what? He's our town council.
I understand that, and that's one of the reasons why. And that's one of the reasons why we have applied for variance relief.
And so then, as one member, I sit there and say, what is the cri, what criteria are you meeting for that variance relief? I.e., those questions that we just asked, whether topography, lot shape, lot size, and none of those fit the criteria.
Doesn't lot size cover it?
I would argue that, I would argue.
Topography, soil condition.
So, my attitude is, is we've got an article at town meeting that we really want to get done, right? Because we feel it's so important to this community. I would love to do this. We've been doing this for years.
We all, you know, we sat back and we delayed applications because of the fact that you were going to town meeting with a new bylaw in May. What happened? It got pulled. So, I don't think we can rely upon any finality when it comes, when it comes to.
I don't know how this board reacts if we're, we're sitting here as people who are supposed to uphold the rules and regulations, right? And we sit there, we've got town council that's given us an opinion, and we're sitting there, some of us don't agree with it, but, but you know what? He's the boss.
He told you, he told you you needed. He told you you needed variance relief because he said you lost your protections, and that's what we've applied for.
So, we sit here as a board, as one applicant, as one member, and I sit here and say, tell me what the variance, what you.
And I argue that, I argue that the 10,000 square feet of this lot coupled with the 100 fif, the 100 feet of frontage creates a shape situation that doesn't allow us to do.
That would make hundreds, hundreds of lots buildable in this community because they're undersized and so.
Most of them have already been built upon. I mean, does it make, does it make sense to require?
He sued for being arbitrary and capricious, allowing you to do it and turning other people down.
I want to do it. I really want to do it.
Give me a reason.
Well, I've given you a reason. I've given you the reason that we have available.
I gave you a variant, down on Monomaskoy, you had wetland setbacks. And you had the same on Amy Brown. And you had topography issues on Amy Brown.
The relief that we saw on Amy Brown was a frontage relief. It was not, it was not a variance from the setback. It was a frontage requirement.
You also had, you also had a topography issue.
Hamblin Road was also the same thing. It was a frontage and it was a lot size. I'm not even sure you were here for that one.
Say yes to this, then, then there's gonna be another application next week possibly that says, yeah, but you just approved this one because of this reason. We want to do it, we got people sitting out there saying we shouldn't be doing it.
Do you mind if I interject? So, based on what the building commissioner and Kevin just said, is, this is a different aspect, is you meet all requirements. So, if somebody else comes into you with an undersized lot with the frontage, but they meet all the zoning criteria, right, and they have a hardship and they have scale, it would be the same thing. There's no.
Yeah, but you don't have lot size, that's the problem.
Right. The hardship, the hardship in the shape is the lot size, right, and the frontage, those are two hardships. And third hardship is the conditions of existing building. So, this is a deficient building. It has two concrete blocks under it, no footings, two-by-six floor joists, no insulation. It's a cottage. It was built on probably weekends in the 1950s. Doesn't meet any building code criteria. So, we looked at it first as addition remodel to try to work with the existing building. It's pre-existing, non-conforming, say, okay, do addition.
This might help then. What about the one that's a FEMA issue? Remember that, Mike? That was because the FEMA required it.
Yeah. So, but what I'm saying is.
If this were a vacant lot, they could do this. If this were a vacant lot, no, they couldn't because the lot.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. If this were a vacant lot.
How could they do it?
Because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot and you can build in accordance with zoning. You could build this structure on a vacant lot and you're telling me you can't build it on a lot.
Because it's not attached to other property that they own.
That's correct. If the lot's a buildable lot and it's a vacant lot, they can do this. You're telling me that because, because they happen to have a building on there, that isn't.
I agree, but we've got town council that says as soon as you tear it down, you lose grandfather protection. I'm not the attorney. I'm not the town council.
We didn't make the rules here.
You lose that protection.
We agree with you.
We agree with you.
I understand. I understand.
We got somebody that's above us that's telling us.
And I'm telling you that if I decide to sit back and appeal this decision, then I'm gonna look to the Moorean decision and I'm gonna look to the Amy Brown Road decision.
I'll give you a couple more. I'll give you a couple more of the towns.
And there are several more. I mean, we could, we could go back and argue all these raise and replace projects because the raise and replace projects have been granted for the last 20 years, you know?
We agree with everything you're saying. But if we sit on the board today with somebody higher above us who's sitting there saying.
Town council doesn't make the decisions for the board. The board can sit on its own and make its own decision.
He advises us. The town pays him to advise us.
I understand that.
And he's advised us and he said, you know what he said?
I haven't seen what he said. Nobody shared that with me, so I don't know what he said.
He said, we can't do what you're asking us to do.
He says you can't grant variance relief.
Give the three, one of the three criteria.
When you knock down the pre-existing structure.
You need a variance.
When you knock it down.
It's no longer grandfathered. You lose grandfather.
Extend, what's the wording? Extend, alter, or change?
Correct.
Because there's nothing there to extend, alter, or change.
Understood.
You lose all grandfather.
That's why we, that's what, you read the most recent case that came down on this, and one of the most recent cases that comes down on this says, that's why people apply for variance relief from the lot size and frontage requirements because of the concern that they may have relative to the loss of protection.
And we understand and get that, but we have to then have the criteria that you meet to allow that, the application for a variance. What is that criteria? One of those three things. And it doesn't fit in one of those three things. That's what we're saying. What other three, three things?
Well, shape, size, topography.
Shape of the lot and the size of, no, no.
Soil condition.
Soil conditions.
Not size, it's soil conditions.
Nothing to do with size.
Can't be size.
Do you think they could leave one block there?
Don't want you to go down that path.
No, don't go there.
This is why we're trying to change this part of these, this is the exact situation we talked about last week.
There's the one block there, build around it.
That the planning board couldn't seem to.
Can I make the call?
Maybe they can help us talk it up.
Bridgette with the steel.
Here's what I'd like to say. I'd like to say this. We're having a, the planning board's having a public hearing soon, another, I think, a couple of weeks.
It's gonna discuss it.
This example that we need to get in front of that board.
And we'd love you guys to come to the planning board.
We need to be able to show them, this is what we want to be able to do.
This is an exact example we mentioned to her last week when we got to the meeting.
We want to be able to say yes to these things.
This is what's gonna happen, I told her. Or we, I said, this is exactly what's gonna happen. And here it is happening.
We need this, okay? Now, I understand where you're coming from, but we're in a pickle here. We're in a very bad situation and we've been in this situation in three, four months. We cringe when we see people coming forward. We read an agenda that has people like you coming forward in reference to these issues because we used to be able to deal with them. We dealt with them differently, but we've been told by town council that we need to deal with them differently.
I mean, how, how, how long was that continued for, that, the one with the issue? What was the street address down on the water?
Overlook.
Overlook.
Yes.
That was.
Continued and continued.
Six, seven weeks?
That's because in a butter, in a butter.
It was continued, it was continued for several reasons. One, but, and I wasn't privy to the first hearing, but it was continued at the first hearing because it was suggested that they should come back and apply for variance relief, okay? Then they came back and they applied for variance relief. And then when we came back and applied for variance relief, it was said, no, we don't want you to do this. We want you to withdraw because we're gonna have a town meeting in May and we're gonna solve this problem. Well, you had the town meeting in May and the problem wasn't solved. And you've gotta, you've gotta.
And may not be solved again in the next town meeting.
You know the reason, you know the reason why it wasn't resolved? It was pulled because there was no backing from the planning board.
Well, that's not, that's not.
Now, there's a planning board meeting coming up in the next, X number of weeks.
It's all our problems.
It's everybody's.
We tried to, we had a special meeting last week to explain to the planning board why these, why this is a problem.
And I had every intention of being there.
She showed up late.
I would have been there, but I couldn't quite make it.
Well, none of the board members came. The chairman came and she showed up late. And she half listened to what we had to tell her. And the whole reason for the meeting was for this, so we can get this changed.
I'm looking, I'm not trying to defend it, but, you know, afterwards I had a conversation with her. It was a good conversation and I think she did listen. I think that we can get there. But, but in the meantime, we've got this, I'll call it a problem, and I don't know where to turn. I really want to say yes to this. It makes sense. But I can't make, I can't do something, I as one member, can't do something where I've got town council who we have to, we're supposed to listen to, right? And sitting there saying, you can't do this.
True.
I don't know what to say to you. I want to do it.
But I don't think, I don't think you should necessarily make every decision based upon whether or not you think you're gonna be appealed or not.
I don't think we have, but this was right down that path. This is exactly what he's pointing at. This is exactly what he's pointing at.
The problem, uh.
You were there for overlook. You heard the two other attorneys.
Right. Different issue, overlook. Overlook was a totally different issue. Overlook has nothing to do with what we're talking.
It doesn't meet, doesn't meet setback.
The bottom line of Kevin.
Yeah, but the lot was too small to hit.
Yeah, but the neighbor was more concerned about the setback, of course, it was sort of.
But you know what? If you tear it down.
The neighbor was concerned about his view. That's the bottom line.
Oh, that's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line on overlook.
But you know what? On this specific application, if you tear it down, our zoning enforcement officer's gonna say you don't have any rights to rebuild, correct?
Based on the information I have right now.
So, you need a variance. This board, in order to give you a variance, has to, we have, you have to fit in one of those criteria.
You're not telling me anything I don't know.
Well, exactly. But what am I supposed to do? What are we supposed to do?
Well.
Don't we meet well on shape?
Say again?
We meet well on those requirements of shape, right?
It's a square lot.
It's a square. I mean, shape is like one of these, you know.
If it's a pork chop or something like that, or a piece of pie. Or if it's on the side of a hill, that's topography.
If it's a town council, it's a representative.
Or half of it's quicksand.
Doesn't accomplish.
No.
No, because it's a square lot.
Let me suggest something. Continue while we withdraw this. Come to the planning board meeting and help us sell this because it's going back in front of the town in October's meeting.
Well.
We need some pressure on the planning board.
We need to know when the planning board meeting is, the last time you went through.
We're waiting to find out.
Last time you went through this, nobody could find out.
I asked Mary at the meeting and she said, she looked at her calendar, I'm sorry, at my age, my memory isn't as good as it used to be, but she actually picked, she said, this following date will work, this date, and then it'll fit in the criteria that she has time to advertise, et cetera, et cetera. She's, she's, she's working with this board as far as I'm concerned.
I would love to see you all show up and talk at the planning board. Because we're gonna show up and talk. And we're right behind you.
And if I don't have surgery that day, I'll show up and talk.
We're right there with you.
I think it's, so that's why I asked if the applicants understood the history.
Well, they understood that we were in a state of flux on our raise and replace, but quite frankly, they also understood that the board had acted favorably upon two requests that I was particularly involved with in a similar situation. Now, I don't know whether town council's opinion has come to you after those two hearings, in which the case, I was totally unaware the town council had offered this opinion. But I know, I know that the building commissioner was promoting a zoning bylaw change that would put this in his purview and not have to get the zoning board involved in situations where you have a conforming building going on a non-conforming lot.
We've had that conversation.
That's another, that's a little bit different conversation.
But we're trying to understand if that makes sense also to the planning board or what that reaction would be. So, my point is, is even if it stays with this board and we have to issue a special So my point is, is even if it stays with this board and we have to issue a special permit, as one member tonight, if you were applying for a special permit with this application, I'd be saying yes. As one member.
So we can't do that?
But that's not within our rights. That's not within our abilities. It's, you know, we're handling it, right? And so...
We're trying to change this bylaw.
Right, understood.
If I may?
Please.
Kevin, I can be the point person for you in regards to finding a date. I'd have to date with the planning board because I need to know as well... Because I have to pass that information on. So I know I have your email contacts, and I like we've been strangers. So the moment I find out, I can forward that information to you. And that's all I can tell you right now. It's, other than the fact, in a sense, to kind of defend the board. When that article got pulled in May, it was like, at the 11th hour, we weren't expecting it. We were expected to talk on it. We were all blindsided.
We're all there, not blaming the board.
No, no, but I'm just making...
I'm just telling you that that had a significant impact on applicants who had deferred and delayed their applications.
I totally agree.
Or withdrew applications.
I agree.
And I was one person who was vocal about it as well. Because I said, you know, I made it clear to certain individuals that this is not right because you're basically putting too much on a standstill. A lot of people have been waiting, and now we're doing this now. I said, I was asked specifically by the town, what was important? Because as you may know, May's town meeting is designed for money issues. But I got them to be able to take that bylaw and get it in. And to have that happen, I was totally surprised.
Yeah, but Mike, if I can add to that. If you were at the town meeting and you noticed the people that got up and left right after that vote, it is my opinion, and I'm in town meeting, trying to get articles passed quite commonly, and I can tell you, I don't believe that this article would have passed. There are many people in our community that are not in favor of that article. Many, there are some, I'll use it, put it that way. Having said that, the last thing we wanted was for an article to not pass. All right? Now, we are working with the planning board, hopefully, to get an article that everybody, i.e. us and the planning board, selectmen, and everyone else, would say, we're all in favor of this. Thus, putting enough pressure to get that two-thirds vote. That's what we need to do. I don't believe that the pulling of that last article was the wrong thing to do, frankly, in watching what happened after it was pulled, and how many people left and how it came down. I think it was the right thing. But I think also that we need to really work hard on getting this new article passed. And we have to put a lot of effort into it.
I can tell you one thing. If it got shut down, you'd have to wait two years before you could reintroduce it.
Right. In that fashion, I mean.
Exactly.
Unless you saw the change, we have to look to the planning board.
It's very...
You think that through, Kevin, it was the right thing to do if we...
I'm not saying it wasn't the right thing to do. I'm just saying that it had, you know, an adverse impact on a lot of folks.
And it's having an adverse impact there.
And it's still having an adverse impact.
I get you.
But I disagree.
The planning board in every town is a very powerful board, and they weren't backing it. And don't think that the people from overlook were not listening to that, and we're not going to talk about... What are you talking about? Your planning board doesn't even back it. How are we going to get two-thirds?
That's a tall drink, as you know, two-thirds, right? Listen, I think everybody, I can only speak for them. We want to do this. I want to do this. I feel bad that we can't do this. I just feel in my heart that I can't do this. I would do, sign it, do whatever we can do to get it done, as you've seen prior to this applicant. I don't know what to do to get it over the finish line. We have a town council that I don't... Well, I just can't get there.
We want a dog. We want a dog in.
That we can do.
Ten foot from the property line.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
We've been through the issue with leaving a wallet, but apparently that's something that's up in the air, too, correct? Yeah, because I couldn't get an answer from council on it. So that's a wild card as well.
Ooh. Show up at the planning board for us to help us sell it.
Whatever, I just can't. I don't... We can't do it.
I'm a train, appreciate us to do it.
Do they have an appeal mechanism?
They can feel out denial to the courts. They can continue down, and we can say denied or whatever.
It'll take longer than the whole town meeting.
You just ask the question, yes.
Yeah, but that... Doesn't that stop it for two years if we shut it up?
Hmm, not really, not if the rules change.
They can continue, we can deny.
Because don't forget, usually when they appeal it, the first thing, and I know you confirm this, is that what the judge first looks at is, did the ZBA act accordingly? Was it the notifications went out, blah, blah, blah?
Probably a bold denial, frankly, and so they probably won't get very far if we deny it. That would be my thinking. There is some case law that town council was correct. I think there's more case law that is incorrect, but that's my opinion. I could be wrong.
Well, my understanding is, you know, I'm talking to our mutual friend, is that it depends on, A, the judge you get when you're in court, and how much weight he puts on the ones that support it and don't support it. You know, and that's really what it comes down to.
I'm not questioning our town council, because you know what? He's an intelligent human being. He's an attorney, knows what he's doing, and far be it from me. And so, yeah, and bottom line is, is he's given us his decision, his opinion, and we have to uphold that.
And if we're sued, he's the one that's defending us.
Exactly right. So far be it from us, the second guess is...
Pardon me?
The town is also paying him to defend that.
Yes.
I mean, he's...
That's what you want to avoid. You want to avoid suits.
You know what? Who be... Layman me disagrees. Who am I? I'm not an attorney.
Okay, I've discussed it with my clients, and we'll withdraw the application currently, if that's acceptable to the board.
Yep.
And then we'll see where we go from there. We'll either take this building down piece by piece and replace it piece by piece as a remodel situation, or we'll wait for the bylaw to change, and then they have to come back to this...
Show up at the planning board meeting.
May have to come back for a special permit, if that's the direction that the board is headed.
Can you talk to... Can you talk to the planning board council?
I will be happy to talk to the planning board. I mean, I've dealt with Mary before. I marry, have a good relationship with Mary.
You can bring as many friends as you want to support it.
Unfortunately, I was unaware of the planning board meeting back in April or May when it was conducted, when the butters from overlook drive showed up. I didn't... I was not aware of the fact that that meeting was being conducted.
And I can tell you, when Mary was here, she said to me, and I'm not sure the board, but when I went over and talked to her, she says, you know, I learned a lot tonight, and frankly, a lot of good things came out of tonight's meeting. So I think, I think we have some traction. I think we just need to keep going down that road. We need to... And she asked me slash the board to show her things like this, and I said, this is going to negatively affect a lot of people if this doesn't get passed. There you go, okay? Here's an application, all right? That's a better house, more taxes, all that stuff, right? And so, this is exactly what we need to show to the board, the planning board.
This is a little bit different than some of the others, though. Some of the others that are people also looking for relief.
I agree.
For maintaining non-conformities and things like that.
I get you, but it's still, it's still, as you can see from this board, we're still making the same...
Right, but I'm...
It's still the same.
I'm assuming that when you're going forward with a bylaw change, that you will also try to protect those folks that have had pre-existing non-conforming structures that would like to maintain them.
The one we proposed would take care of all of it.
I haven't seen it, so I don't know what... I don't know how it reads.
There's no one that believes more in grandfathering than me, Kevin.
I totally understand that.
There you go. I know forty...
We can add the word... Add the word reconstruction to section seventeen, and you've solved your problem. You know, because it's only the interpretation that reconstruction is not part of that bylaw that's created this issue, you know? But, so, I mean, it's...
So are you asking for what specifically?
Just a withdrawal.
Your withdrawal?
Correct.
Hey, do we need to vote on that?
Without prejudice?
Correct.
Without prejudice?
Correct.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the applicant, the applicant of... What app... What are we on here?
Treasure.
Twenty-three treasure lane, Paul and Patricia Tony's request, without prejudice, for a...
Variance relief.
Variance relief.
Variance relief and... Under variance relief from frontage and lot size under one seventy-four thirty-one of zoning bylaw after destruction. Single family dwelling or property located in Ithaca zoning district map ninety-six parcel one oh one Mashpee, Mass. And you're asking for a withdrawal.
Withdrawal without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hope the applicants understand we try.
It's a good thing that foot is not something you can walk on. I thought you were going to run up here to try to do us in.
Just thank your town council.
Okay.
See you, Mary.
Soon. You understand why I said without prejudice, don't you know? It means that they can be simply...
Yeah, but not...
I'm going to wait for two years.
Oh, I guess I can.
I told Dally it was going to be a long one.
That comes from fourteen years on the conservation commission.
Why? I've been up since five, since four. Because I had that training on Milford.
Oh.
I've been up since four. Oh, wow.
I was in Needham at six twenty this morning.
Wow.
You okay?
Doctor's appointment.
Six twenty?
Six twenty in Needham.
The doctor just showed up at six twenty?
No, I had to wait till ten thirty. Oh, to go to the appointment in Needham. Four hours sat and read.
Those damn doctors, I don't know.
Well, I had to wait till you got off the golf course.
I never play... I played golf twice, I never liked it.
It is? I'm only working until ten tomorrow during my doctor's appointment.
I thought he was going to get up. It's rapid. I don't know who's... Who sat on the last one? Who's sitting on this one?
I don't really care.
Who's sitting on this one?
Do you really care?
Wait a minute, let's find out. Hold on.
Right, so...
Sharon.
Do you want to flip a coin?
So, yeah, Brad, you're sitting on this one.
Okay.
You win. Sharon's out.
All right.
So Sharon, you're in on the last one, which is our next... Just a second, I'll have you read the next new hearing.
One, two, three.
Sure.
Five, that's five.
Don't disappear. Oh, yeah.
That's five.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
Sixty-three Massasoia Ave. Owner Sandra Arganio requests a written finding under article one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for the reconstruction of an existing deck and construction of a new lower deck on property located in R three zoning district. Map seventy-two parcel thirty-two Mashpee, Mass.
All right. Good evening. Steve Cook from Cotua Bay Design, a project designer, representing Sandra Arganio. On sixty-three Massasoia, the, there's an existing deck on the left-hand side of the house. It's a... This is an upside-down house, all the living areas on the second floor, and the deck is elevated seven feet above the existing grade. Right now, that deck is failing. You walk on it, it's wobbly. It's an old deck, it's been there. The footings are undersized, posts so forth. So what we're proposing is to rebuild the deck. We're going to slide it back a little bit, but get no closer to the northerly property line than it is now. Set the stairs down to a new lower deck. Right now, the stairs do come down to a lower deck, which is, doesn't meet any code compliance also, too. So we're just getting no closer to the property lines than what is there now. So because of the, you know, the setbacks, the existing house is, you know, pre-existing non-conforming, and so is the deck, and we have that there. We're within a hundred feet of conservation. We have filed for an IDA in front of conservation, but speaking with Drew, there aren't any issues with the conservation on that end of it.
Negative IDA?
Uh, will be. We filed for it.
Oh, yeah.
We're going through in another week or two, but we expect a negative IDA to do that, so. With that, I'll take any questions from the board.
Okay, so you're going from thirteen one to fourteen nine? Is that right?
Let me just get the latest plan out. I had it in the folder.
It dated April twenty-sixth, maybe? Am I looking at the right one?
I believe so.
Where do you see those measurements?
Oh, yeah. General notes?
Yes, so...
General notes?
We have, well, we're at nine point three feet existing. We're going to nine point five feet on the northerly property line.
So you're at nine three, going to nine five.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, the, on the westerly property line, we're twenty-four feet five, twenty-four point five feet. That's remaining. We're not getting any closer there.
Okay, that's the front setback, right?
Yeah, front setback, yes.
Got it.
The rear setback, we're at forty-nine and a half feet. The, on the east side, the south side, we're twenty-seven point seven feet to the existing house. Just the deck's going to be rebuilt on the northerly side of the property. You know, as you can see, for, we're at fourteen point nine percent on lot coverage, so we're well below.
Okay, do we have anything to read in? Nobody in the audience?
I'm sure there's some comments.
I get building.
Go ahead.
Sixty-three Massasoia Avenue. The area is zone R three and pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under article one seventy-four dash seventeen to allow for reconstruction of an existing side deck and construction of a new front lower deck. I understand asking for a written finding for the side deck, but I'm not clear that a new front lower deck would also require a written finding and not a variance from a meeting. The forty-foot front setback, wouldn't a new front lower deck not meeting the front setback be viewed as a new non-conforming situation unless I'm missing some information about this location?
But you're not going any closer.
Correct, yeah, and there's already a lower deck. We're just expanding the lower deck for better access.
But the front deck isn't going any closer.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So I wonder why you had that question?
I don't know.
Doesn't make sense.
All right, let's see.
Border Health?
Conservation has no jurisdiction, they tell us.
Border Health?
No comment.
Mr. Chairman? Border Health?
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, Border Health, comment, no comment.
Thank you very much.
Because that's like...
You've done well.
I learned from a master.
Oh, boy. Here we go. Twenty-one red a comment. Is that it?
That's it?
Do we have anything else?
Mike's question.
Oh, wait a minute, no.
Conservation, Border Health, and...
Linden.
Buildings.
Also, sorry, I think that's it. Any other final comments before Ron takes over?
Ron, go ahead. I would like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Sandra Arangio, sixty-three Massasoia Ave, under section one seventy-four seventy, the zoning bylaws allow for the reconstruction of an existing deck and construction of a new lower deck on property located in R three zoning district, map seventy-two parcel thirty-two Mashpee, Mass. In issuing the written finding, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass general laws forty-eight, section six. Also, I make reference to the site plan, Sandra Arangio, sixty-three Massasoia Ave, Mashpee, Mass, scale one inch equals ten feet, dates April twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, drawn by Warwick Associates Inc., sixty-three County Road, Box eight oh one, North Elmwood, Mass. Signed by Gary S. Labrie, registered land surveyor, number four zero zero three nine, dated seven six eighteen. Also, a deck plan, rebuilt deck for Arangio residence, sixty-three Massasoia Ave, Mashpee, Mass, scale one quarter inch equals one foot, date seven twenty twenty eighteen, drawing number A dash one, first floor and second floor plan, drawing number A dash two, left elevation, front elevation, drawing number A dash three, right elevation and rear elevation, conditioned upon all town department comments that have been read into the record.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, took some long.
That's where you go. Nice to see you.
You too.
Steve.
Who was in on this one?
I was.
Who was the last one? Wait a minute. Man, man.
Want to flip a coin?
Let's get the paper.
Flip a member.
Sharon, Brad was on 23 Treasure, so it's Sharon on this one. All right, here we go. Hey, Ron.
Ron, you sign this.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. You could've signed my name.
Thought about it.
I couldn't. I could ever.
Say goodnight.
What are you still doing up?
Yeah, the wife said goodnight.
All right, so let's see.
If we do this again, I have to call on sick. I'll be back at school. You have to let me know if we do another nine o'clock, because I'll fall on sick the next day.
Gee, boy.
I get up at 4:30.
What?
She gets up at 4:30.
Yeah, I was up at 4:30 this morning.
Yeah, but on a, like, daily.
I'm up at five o'clock every morning.
I hear you.
But you're retired.
Let's see, what do we got here? Is this the same stuff?
Yeah. Always an excuse. Always an excuse.
I don't have to get up that early.
But I do.
You choose to.
What time do you go to bed?
When I'm working, probably 8:30.
Oh, yeah, I don't go to bed till 11:30. Where do you teach?
Middle Borough.
Well, how long does it take you to get there?
About 40 minutes. It's not bad.
Probably coming home, though.
After, yeah, after.
When's school, just, when's school start actually start?
I go back Tuesday next week.
Yeah, so the traffic won't be as bad.
No, I don't have to work Friday.
Two of those.
Well, that's good.
Thursday's traffic's bad, though.
Thursday?
Why don't we give this one a little stamp?
Now, Thursday's the new Friday?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and let's see what else we got. Oh, this looks nice. Let's stamp this one.
I wasted a lot of time on that dock. I wasted a lot of time on that dock. Not wasted, but, no, it was wasted. Well, people repeating this.
I thought this was gonna become another overlook, that dock.
Hey.
That dock was like another overlook.
I'll tell you one thing, we did the right thing by listening to everybody.
No, you have to.
Right thing.
Absolutely. Have to let everyone. If she had a home already there and had some kind of reason that was too close to her dock, but there's nothing there, it's an empty lot.
Yeah, but someday she might build, probably will, and put a bar.
Well, you can't, we can't vote on that. If everything's being done right, how can we vote on that?
But hers isn't like a bay, like.
She doesn't want to look at it. She doesn't want to look at it.
I'll tell you a story afterwards.
I spent two hours looking at property today.
Better be cool, I'm gonna walk out.
All right, uh.
What about Ron? Do we need Ron for this?
Yeah, we need the.
Other business?
Well, let's see. What do we got? Board to review by.
All by law.
Bylaw submitted, ZBA finally. We'll do that, we'll do that in a minute. Let's approve the July, all right, Sharon, would you read?
Move to approve July 25, 2018 meeting minutes.
Second.
That's a motion, isn't it?
Yes, move, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Motion to approve August 14, 2018 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the last thing we have to review is stuff that I brought with me. Unfortunately, it's changing by the minute. And you need this stamped? Didn't you stamp that?
No.
Okay. Oh, did everybody see this? Did you get a copy of that?
That was emailed, wasn't it?
I didn't get to look at it yet. No, I haven't.
Yeah. Oh, is this the, oh, okay. That's, uh.
Those haven't changed, though, right? Since we did those.
How's the moment changed? Just typos.
But I quickly looked at them, they didn't look like they'd changed much.
They didn't. They're just typos.
All right, so there is a potential that we're going to change 174-17.1, I believe, to add in some wording that would directly affect this house that we just listened for the last 40 minutes. So rather than talk about that one, let's move to the next one. Let's go to mobile food. All right, I'll read the first one. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw as follows. Add the following new definitions to 174-3 to read as follows. Mobile truck, a mobile food truck, trailer, or other food/ice cream dispensing unit is defined as a food service establishment that is a vehicle mounted or wheeled and is capable of being readily movable. And to add the following new section to the Table of Use Regulations 174-25 to read as follows. Mobile food, 174-25I, 16 in parentheses. Type of use, mobile food truck, trailers/ trailer, and ice cream trucks looking to set up at either a permanent or temporary location required. Board of Health review first, a plot plan as to where it will be located, and a letter from the property owner is required. No button notices are required. So residential, you can see that's not allowed. Commercial, you need a PR, which is a plan review, looks it over, whether it's in commercial 1, 2, or 3. And that's a food truck, like, if you go to any construction site in the city, they pull up at 9:30 in the morning, and everybody gets off the wherever and goes and gets coffee and whatever. So that's commercial 1, 2, and 3, and industrial I-1. So let's see. Submitted by the zoning board. Explanation, mobile food vehicles have grown in popularity and not, and are not addressed in the current zoning bylaws. This article will clarify in the bylaw where this sort of use can be permitted under Table of Use Regulations. So we skipped this one because you weren't here. So we went to a mobile food truck. Anything you'd like to add now that I've read it?
No, it's just that, uh, mobile food trucks are solely appearing in town, and, and it's not really covered under the zoning bylaws.
Doesn't mention it anywhere, does it?
It doesn't, and the only guidance I have at this time is this through the Board of Health. That's why there's a lot of references here for meeting with the Board of Health.
Food trucks?
Yes.
Oh, I love food trucks.
They're really gonna have to do, they're really gonna have to do a, um, a site plan of where that truck's gonna sit.
Yeah, the reason why is this, is, is, we, we've had one, and you probably seen, seen it, it was over at Batello's.
Yeah.
And we had.
Yeah, now he's over in the industrial park.
Excuse me?
Same guy, it's not, he goes to industrial park. He's back and forth.
Yeah, well, the thing is, when I went to Batello's, we had a, a plan review, and it was interesting because we actually had a lot of comments from both police and DPW. I didn't see that one coming. So that's why, you know, plan review i- is the easiest way to handle it because.
They go in front of everybody.
Right. The Board of Health gets involved, police, fire, all, all the basics.
Who's the sponsor of this? We, you, we are.
So the question is, we want to submit it for October's meeting, and we're looking at it and say, do we like it? Let's vote on it. Yes, we want to, or no, we don't.
Well, let me do a little bit more clarification. These here have been looked at by town council, and there've been some typos and other little tweaks done, so this is a cleanup version from town council.
Where does the beach fall into this?
The beach?
Yes.
The beach is totally separate. That's with the Board of Health, because that's town property.
Okay, because I know that there's food trucks that just sit at the beach.
Right, and that's totally separate. You know, food trucks are there, that's always been there. These are the food trucks that are looking to set up elsewhere in town, like I said, at Batello's, probably at the industrial plant.
Well, there's the guy that's, that's been out in front of the children's museum for a couple years.
Oh, yeah, that's another, that's an oldie. That's grandfathered.
Really?
It says commercial and resi, and industrial, no residential, as you can see.
Well, that makes sense.
Right.
Can the people that are now, the food trucks that are going to the beach, continue to go to the beach then, under, without this?
Right.
They can.
Right.
So if someone wants to go set up a food truck at, I don't know, 99th Park, just as an example.
Right.
They have to come to us to go to the planning board?
No, plan review.
Plan review.
Plan review.
They don't have to come to us, sorry.
No.
As long as they're not coming to us.
No, 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 no. No, 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 what, you probably don't understand, what plan review is, it's a daytime meeting that's held, that's held twice a month, and there's representatives of the various departments, right.
So why would the ZBA be the one who's putting this forward then? Because they don't come to us, we're not, we're not really even pretty to this area.
Well, because of the fact that I can't submit.
Oh, I mean, I don't mind doing it.
I guess the other question is, how come the planning board didn't do this?
Yeah, well, a planning director or something, or someone.
I can't, because.
And I'm not saying, I mean, I'm okay, if you want it, we'll do, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I'm just trying to understand why we're.
He needs us, he needs us to do it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Now I know why we're doing it.
I, I worked on it, and I needed a sponsor, and you all volunteered.
Would you like to make a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Oh, look at that, he's making a motion.
I have a question.
Why has that?
Does this apply to a canteen truck that goes to a construction site, spends 15, 20 minutes on the site and then leaves?
No.
And if someone that works in the construction field have not seen one of those in 15 years.
Yeah, for some reason, they're not around anymore.
They're gone, they're not around. There's no, there's no commissary that supplies them. They don't come to the lumberyards anymore, you never see them anymore.
Never.
All right.
And it's crazy, it's a shame.
But to answer your question, the answer is no.
Go ahead.
Um, because he's not setting up enough spot. Um, I make a motion that we, I don't know what the motion, we accept this mobile food truck as described, bylaw as described in this, whatever this is called.
It's gonna be an article in the town.
We sponsor.
We're gonna sponsor this article, article for the mobile food truck for the next town meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
There's another one?
There's a whole bunch of them.
Wow!
Oh, yes, I did.
Oh, great, thank you very much.
It's amazing. I would order the pizza if I know what I'm getting so long. Yeah, you're wasting away.
We support all of these answers.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the next one?
Am I on the continuance, extensions, alterations? Is that the one?
Were we doing that one? Let's come back to that one.
Okay, I'll do wetlands setbacks, that's easy.
Yeah, let's do wetlands setbacks. Let's do the easy ones first.
Article, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 174-33 of the zoning bylaws by deleting the language in its entirety and replacing it as follows. The new Article 174-33, setbacks from water and wetlands, in accordance with Chapter 172 of the Town of Mashpee general bylaws, or take any other action relating thereto, submitted by the zoning board of appeals. Do you want the explanation, too?
Sure.
Explanation, Chapter 172 of the Town of Mashpee general bylaws already addresses this with a review by the Conservation Committee, applying to the zoning board of appeals for relief, which has already been granted by the Conservation Commission, is just a duplicate of the approval process.
Sounds good to me.
I'm good.
It sounds good to me, too.
Jim, you were a conservation guy, do you agree?
Yep.
All right, do we have a motion? Ron?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we sponsor Article 174-33 setbacks from water and wetlands at the next town meeting to amend, well, to actually, to amend 174-33, to include the language as submitted to us tonight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's sign this. That one's okay.
Okay.
Bingo.
I'm onto parking facilities.
Who wants to read the next one?
Article, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 174-37 of the zoning bylaws by adding the following sentence to the end of the paragraph as follows. Article 174-37, in the I-1 zoning district, parking facilities shall be located on any side of the building, or take any other actions relating thereto, submitted by the board, zoning board of appeals. Explanation, in accordance with the Town of Mashpee zoning bylaws, the industrial district is utilized for uses like automotive, laundry facilities, bottling plants, printing facilities, and the like, allowing them the autonomy to place the parking, also assist them with building orientation, which has been an issue in the past. These lots are not on the main street, but within a compound that is outside of the general view of the public. Limiting them on where to place the parking is more of an aesthetic reason than for practicality.
Everybody know the reasoning behind why we're doing this? Because in the commercial district, you're not allowed to park in front of the building? You're out in the woods there. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Gives us flexibility.
It gives them flexibility as well.
Absolutely, and long overdue. Uh, what was our, a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we sponsor Article 174-37 at the next town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what are we doing next?
This one looks easy. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 174-31, Note 23, of zoning bylaws by adding the following line at the la, end of the last sentence. All pools shall meet the minimum setbacks required in the zoning district within which they are proposed to be built. No swimming pool shall be placed in the front yard of any property, or take any other action relating thereto, submitted by the zoning board of appeals. Explanation, the proposed language will make it clearer as to where a swimming pool can be placed.
What article number is it?
Where I lost it.
We're on the last page.
I went to the easy ones.
Yeah, we missed one, but, but also, it doesn't say the article.
Well, the town adopts.
Okay, so what's the deal on this? Why are we doing this?
It's because, uh, under the bylaw, it doesn't really say where a swimming pool has, gets to be placed. And when I came on board, it's, basically it was hearsay that supposedly it meets the zoning setback for that district, but it's not really addressed. So we've been doing it long enough, but let's document it. That's all because there is nothing in the zoning bylaw that says where you can place a pool.
So no swimming pool should be placed in the front yard of any property. Pool shall meet minimum setbacks required by zoning district, which is proposed build. In other words, you can't go five feet from the property line.
If it's 15, ask for 15.
Right, makes a lot of sense.
Well, they can go for variance, but, yeah.
Right, okay.
So if they wanted to put it in the front yard, they could go for a variance.
Yeah, they could come to you.
Because there could be some extenuating.
Right. Want to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion that we, I just had you word it, you do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we sponsor the amendment to Article 174-31, no, to Section 174-31, Note 23 of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Mashpee at the next town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll do the one I skipped.
All right, let's back up to the one we missed.
That I skipped. To article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw table of use of regulation by deleting Article 174-25I, parentheses 9, in its entirety, or take of any other actions relating thereto, submitted by the zoning board of appeals. Explanation, currently.
Eight, seven.
Currently, under the zoning bylaw, a property owner is required to apply for a necessary use special permit for, from the zoning board of appeals for proposed fixed and floating piers, wharf docks, and boardwalks, in addition to securing all other permits and approvals required for such structures from town, state, and federal agencies with jurisdiction over inland and/or coastal waterways and wetlands. Historically, the zoning board of appeals has substantively relied on the approval of the Conservation Commission, Shellfish Commission, Waterways Commission, Harbor Master, and other such governmental agencies as a basis for its decision on such special permit applications. It is, and it believes that requiring a separate review approval of such structures by the zoning board of appeals unnecessarily duplicates the permitting process. This amendment will eliminate the requirement of special permits for such structures, thus streamlining the approval process, and applicants must pursue to erect a fixed and floating pier, wharf, dock, or boardwalk.
This would've saved us an hour tonight.
Yes.
Okay, I like it. Does anybody not like it?
Sounds good.
In other words, why are they coming to us?
They already have their approvals.
Right.
Well, we used that defense, I don't know how many times tonight, why, why should we, you know, why should we be saying no to this application when all our predecessors will put no far more than we do in these specific areas of approval? would know far more than we do in these specific areas of approval?
Could you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, um, that we sponsor the amendment to regulations one seventy-four dash twenty-five I parentheses nine, and by deleting that paragraph.
Second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do they have warrant to raise and replace?
Now, there's only two we're missing, which is number two...
Number one.
And number four. Well, it says two on it, I agree, it's the first page, but I'm not sure why they numbered it that way. So Mike, why are we doing? What do we got here? Okay, one seventy-four dash seventeen.
Okay.
Is the way it is now. That's page four.
All right. This is what this is about, this is a conversation, uh, I've had for, since I started working for this community. A lot of other communities grant the building official the ability to issue a permit on structures that meet the zoning setback when the main structure does not comply with zoning. Perfect example, if the house is supposed to be forty feet back and it's only thirty, but the deck they're proposing meets all the setbacks, right now, the way it is, I sent it here. In other communities, I can grant, give the permit because I'm not making it more nonconforming. That's really all that is.
And it's not a reason or replace, correct?
No, it's not.
It's just what they're proposing to do meets setbacks, but the existing house doesn't.
Correct.
And then he has to send it back to us, because the way the bylaw's written, he can't approve it because...
I don't have the authority.
And it wastes our time, we approve them a hundred percent of the time.
Because they're not going any closer.
They're not doing anything wrong with the addition.
A new nonconformity.
And if it was something like that, he'd send it to us.
Does anybody dislike this? All right, how about a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we sponsor the deletion in its entirety of one seventy-four dash seventeen, and replace one seventy-four seventeen with, I'm not gonna read the whole thing.
Okay, I understand. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to page two, also known as the first page. All right, Sharon?
Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new section to article one seventy-four dash seventeen point one, to read as follows. Raise and replace, no pre-existing nonconforming single or two-family dwelling shall be torn down and rebuilt on any lot unless there is an issuance of a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Such a permit may be granted only if the zoning board of appeals finds that any changes, extensions, or alterations of the pre-existing nonconformities are not substantially more detrimental than those existing prior to the removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking. In no case shall new nonconformities be permitted without the assurance of a variance.
Insurance. Insurance.
Okay. To take any other action relating thereto, submitted by the zoning board of appeals. Explanation, this article will clarify under the bylaw the ability of the zoning board of appeals to review and evaluate existing homes to be torn down and rebuilt, which may or may not meet the requirements under the existing zoning bylaws.
Okay, the only thing that I think we need to add to that is...
Is one word?
The word "structure." See, if we look at one seventy-four dash seventeen in your book, it's page fourteen. It says, "nonconforming, single or two-family dwelling structures." We should follow the wording used in the bylaw.
But there's also a word we want to add, too. Mike, where would that fit?
I'm just looking at it now. Probably one, two, third line, where it says, "only if the zoning board of appeals finds that any changes, extensions, or alterations, or reconstruction..."
So, "extensions, comma, alterations, or reconstructions of the pre-existing nonconformities."
Changes, extensions, alterations, or reconstructions.
Right.
Four of them.
Okay.
And this should be plural, "structures."
Yeah, so changes, extensions, comma, alterations, or reconstructions. Right? There we go.
Anybody else see anything, Scott?
Did you say something about structure?
It's gonna say, tear down, it's gonna be two-family dwelling structures.
Dwelling structures, to mimic the wording...
It's just following the wording of the bylaw.
Of the current bylaw. Okay, so there's gonna be two changes.
Yep, structures and reconstructions.
Everybody like it?
Yep.
Love it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the ZBA zoning board of appeals sponsors a new section to one seventy-four seventeen dot one. And we just read into the record what those amendments are, they are different than what's presented to us tonight, they have two additions.
Second.
And the additions are?
The additions are, after dwelling, you add structures, and it would, it would also read, zoning board of appeals finds that any changes, comma, extensions, comma, alterations, or reconstruction of the pre, of the pre-existing nonconformities.
So you're adding...
Structures and/or reconstruction.
Second.
So we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
There you go.
Thank you.
I think we did it all. Okay, I think, is it Brad's turn? Do we have anything else?
You have to sign this last one.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Longest ever.
Ever?
Yeah, this is in the record.
I've been in.
Are we turned off?
No.
No, we haven't adjourned yet.
We haven't adjourned.
You haven't signed either.
I was gonna do that for you.
Hey, Brad, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we return?
I second that.